Turn it over to Councilmember Mealy, Chair of the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to this joint hearing on food insecurity in New York City. I am Darlene Mealy, Chair of the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurities. I want to thank the Chair of General Welfare Committee Deputy Speaker Ayala and the Chair of Aging Committee, Councilmember Hudson, for joining us today to discuss this important topic. In December of last year, the Subcommittee took a hard look at the impact of inflation and the rising costs on our city's older adults for food. Since then, I fear that the problem of food insecurities in our city have gotten only worse. Many older New Yorkers do not know where their next meal will come from. They face a crisis as for access to healthy and nutritious meals. Issues of food insecurities have an impact majority on the Black and Brown communities and people living with low incomes. Our responsibility is to look out for those communities and ensure that they do not go hungry. Our city's 300-plus older adult centers are vital, and they must continue to be reliable community lifelines for older adults. When it comes to assessing nutritional meals, instead of counting continually to underfund our conjugate meals programs and providers, we must make an inflation adjustment in the new budget to cover the increased costs for meals, and we must conduct additional outreach and marketing to our older adults, aware that they can get healthy meals and socialize with others at our city's older adult clubs. As we seek to welcome older adults back into our centers, we must renew the strength of our commitment to them by expanding the availability of these meals, including on weekends. Our older adult population is growing, and the budget for older adult centers and nutritional culinary-sensitive meals must grow with it. Through conjugate and grab-and-go meals at older adult centers, home-delivered meals, SNAP, and our city's network of food pantries and soup kitchens, and with the administration's strong support, we can reach our goal of ending food insecurities for our older adults. I want to thank the administration, all the advocates, and members of the public who have joined us today. I would like to also thank my staff and the Subcommittee staff, and I will now turn it over to the Committee Council to administer the oath. Thank you.
Would members of the administration please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? You may begin when ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jill Berry, and I serve as the First Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Social.
Is your mic on?
The red light is on. Is that better? Okay. My name is Jill Berry, and I serve as the First Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Social Services. I would like to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, and the Members of the Committee on General Welfare, Committee on Aging, and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity for holding today's hearing on food insecurity in New York City. I am happy to have the opportunity for the Department of Social Services to offer testimony. I want to begin by relaying a message to any New Yorker who is currently experiencing food insecurity. We are here to help. You can call 311 or visit foodhelp.nyc.gov to find nearby food pantries and community kitchens. In addition, Access HRA and our Benefits Access Centers serve as further resources to connect with assistance. As the Mayor's Office of Food Policy has outlined in the Food Metrics Report, food insecurity is the lack of access at times to enough nutritionally adequate food for any active, healthy life for all members of a household. Food insecure families may worry that food will run out before they have enough money to buy more, eat less than they should, or be unable to afford to eat balanced meals. The City of New York serves as an active partner in combating food insecurity. The nation's largest municipal social service agency, DSS, assists approximately 3 million New Yorkers every year, administering critical programs that provide greater food security to vulnerable New York City households. The Department of Social Services administers critical programs that connect New Yorkers to the food assistance they need. The Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, helps approximately 1.7 million New Yorkers access nutritious food. The average monthly number of SNAP recipients age 65 or older in FY '22 was approximately 360,000 New Yorkers. Community Food Connection, formerly known as the Emergency Food Assistance Program, or EFAP, funds more than 600 community kitchens and food pantries across the city. Community Food Connection distributed more than 17.7 million pounds of shelf-stable and frozen foods in FY '22. Community kitchens provide hot meals, and food pantries provide groceries for clients to prepare meals at home. The new name reflects the critical role food pantries and community kitchens play in addressing food insecurity across communities citywide, ensuring that everyone has access to fresh, healthy food. DSS's CFC, new emergency food distribution model, which launched in September 2022, provides an increased variety of food, including fresh produce, dairy, shelf-stable foods, frozen foods, and more flexibility when ordering and scheduling deliveries. Additionally, we have progressively pursued culturally sensitive food options in our CFC offerings. For the first time, CFC is providing Halal-certified proteins. CFC offerings have also expanded the number of options for kosher-certified foods. In addition to religious dietary needs, we recognize the diversity of our New York communities and endeavor to provide foods people are used to and grew up with. Cultural sensitivity is a shared value. We appreciate your work as a council in uplifting the need to be intentional in pursuing more culturally sensitive food options, and we will continue to work with CFC partners to achieve that aim. Outreach is an essential component of our work. We have a responsibility to not only make assistance available, but make New Yorkers aware that the city is a partner in food security. To that end, the DSS Office of Community Outreach conducts targeted outreach campaigns to organizations serving specific populations, including older adults, the LGBTQI community, persons with disabilities, and immigrant communities. The Office of Community Outreach conducts presentations and attends resource fairs, farmers' markets, and other events to promote SNAP awareness and increase engagement. In addition, SNAP Support Services works to educate the public about SNAP benefits to maximize the city's use of available federal programs to increase the purchasing power of low-income New Yorkers. SNAP Support Services also provides SNAP trainings and presentations, prescreens potentially eligible applicants, and assists with the SNAP application process. As I mentioned at the start of my testimony, New Yorkers in need of assistance should call 311, visit foodhelp.nyc.gov to find nearby food pantries and community kitchens, or reach us through Access HRA or our Benefits Access Centers. While we endeavor to support a range of nutritious food options at pantries, it is important to remember that external events that impact the national food system also impact local pantries. Supply chain disruptions, inflation, and other external shocks that have consequences for the corner bodegas, supermarkets, and grocery stores also have real consequences for our food pantries. As a city, we work to be the best partner we can in helping pantries account for the seasonality of items and use funds in the most cost-effective ways to get the most out of taxpayer dollars used to support food pantry's important work. We should also keep in mind that as the federal government and New York state government wind down COVID pandemic-related emergency food assistance measures, lines of funding that were available in the past are reduced or halted altogether. Some one-time payments have already ended. For example, February 2023 marked the final month of federal funding for supplemental benefits for SNAP, the emergency allotment of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits. Food pantries also receive lines of funding from multiple levels of government. Thus, advocacy on the state and federal levels to be conscious of the challenges food pantries face remains important. Indeed, we value the council's support and advocacy in reaching out to partners across government to highlight the importance of tackling food insecurity and mobilizing resources to meet neighborhoods' needs. On benefits processing, I would like to reiterate several points made by Acting Commissioner Park when she testified before the council in March. The COVID-19 pandemic caused extraordinary adversity and resulted in an increase in demand for public benefits. Relative to January 2019, January 2023 SNAP applications were up 67%. Throughout, we have pursued steps to streamline the process, make the best use of technology, adapt our systems, and mobilize our teams to accommodate New Yorkers' needs. We prioritized frontline staff hiring. We sought and obtained waivers from state and federal partners, and our teams connected more New Yorkers to benefits than in recent pre-pandemic years. With 1.7 million New Yorkers receiving SNAP benefits, the highest number since 2014, we remain focused on solutions to deliver for our fellow New Yorkers. We appreciate the opportunity to testify today, and my colleague from Department for the Aging and I welcome your questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and good morning. And, you know, thank you for being here. This is a very important conversation. This is obviously something that keeps many of us awake at night. And I will share that, you know, I represent a very high-needs district, and I was, even I was still shocked and alarmed by the long lines of individuals waiting for hours for a box of food during the pandemic and the shock and realization that sometimes those boxes didn't really necessarily cover the needs of larger families, right? Which, as we know, you know, primarily in Black and Brown communities, we have larger families. And, you know, it was really, it was heartbreaking and eye-opening and really a reflection of how much work, you know, continues to be needed, to be done in order to ensure that food insecurity is not a conversation that we're continuing to have in a city of New Yorkers, where there's so much, you know, access to funding and resources. We want to make sure that everyone has access to those resources. So I know that there are some questions that we will not be able to get responses to today, and you can kind of, you know, direct me if I'm asking something that, you know, maybe that, you know, that we shouldn't be asking today. As some of you may know, there's a legal case still pending, and so some of our questions won't be able to be answered today. But one of the largest complaints and the largest concern that we've had in the last couple of years has been the rising number of New Yorkers that are applying for SNAP benefits and the longer wait times because, you know, we also understand that every city agency, including HRA, has been hit with a workforce, you know, deficit and that that, you know, in turn impacts our ability or your ability to process applications as quickly as possible. So can you tell us what the current volume of new applications for SNAP is, you know, as of today? Is your mic, I don't know why your mic sounds so low. Oh, okay.
Because I forgot to put it on that time. We're seeing on average 42,700 applications a month for SNAP benefits.
Okay. And how are we, are we doing any better in terms of the processing of the applications?
We still have a ways to go, but we are making a lot of progress. I can share with you the timeliness numbers that are published in the MMR. And again, I want to preface this with, this is not ideal. Every New Yorker deserves to have their applications processed on time. That is our goal. That is what we are working towards. We understand that we have not been meeting our goal, but we are working towards it. And what I want to share is that we went from a low of 19.2% timeliness in SNAP in December, and for February, we're up to 49.9% processed on time.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine point nine percent.
In February?
Correct. That is not where we want to be, but it is a huge amount of progress from December, and we're continuing to make progress.
Okay. What, how, what do you estimate is the amount of time that a person is, an individual who has applied is waiting from the point of applying to getting a response?
We don't, we're not really tracking it that way. We're just trying to get through every application at this point.
I mean, I think it's important, you know, to note because if I'm, you know, if it's taking, you know, HRA two or three months to process an application, that's two or three months that a family is struggling to make ends meet. So why are you not tracking that information?
Yeah, we can, we can get that, we can get back to you on that number.
I mean, I think, I think it's important, you know. When I, when I look at, and we've been having this conversation about food insecurity, and when I look at food insecurity, I'm like, you know, it touches so many of us in so many different ways. And, you know, we're talking about, you know, ensuring that people have access to safety net programs and services, but also, once, you know, we're getting, even in locations where we have access to food, right? Our schools, our hospitals, our, you know, you know, senior centers, that the food, the quality of the food, right, is culturally relevant and that is nutritious, and people are actually eating it. Because it's also, right, the added complexity of food waste because we're feeding folks, you know, food that they don't recognize. We're seeing this, you know, with the asylum seeker issue. We've seen, you know, videos of, you know, bulk packages of, you know, of food that has, you know, been turned down and thrown in the garbage. So we want to eliminate a lot of that, and we did see a lot of that during the pandemic as well. But this issue with the SNAP benefits, you know, really concerns us because, you know, for obvious reasons. You know, I don't know if I've shared this before, but I think I have. I went to, I went, you know, a few years, maybe, well, not that many, but enough years back, went to HRA to apply for food stamp benefits because I was in between jobs, and I was going to start working, but it was a few weeks away, and I was struggling. And I remember sitting there from 9:00 in the morning all the way till 5:30 in the afternoon to be told that, you know, I had to come back in two weeks. They were going to give me an appointment. And I said, "Well, I can't come back in two weeks. Can I come back tomorrow?" And they said, "Sure, you can come back tomorrow." So I got up early, I got up early the next day, and I came back because I was expecting to get emergency food stamps. And I waited there till about 2:00 in the afternoon, and then they called me in, and they said, "Okay, you qualify. We have to give you an appointment for two weeks so you can come back." And I'm like, but I, like, I've wasted two days of my life. And on top of that, I'm still leaving here without any aid for myself and my family. And that is not the exception. That seems to be the rule sometimes. And so how are we, what changes is HRA? You know, what is the immediate response to this workforce issue so that we can ensure that families are not waiting there for two days and still leaving without benefits and having to wait three months, two months to eat?
Yeah, so staffing has obviously been a very big focus of ours, and we have worked very closely with DCAS and OMB to improve our recruitment of frontline staff, especially for processing SNAP benefits. DCAS is helping a lot with their job fairs for recruiting. We're participating in job fairs with them every week. Over the last few months, we've hired over 100 eligibility specialists in our SNAP program. Those are the frontline staff that take the applications, conduct the interviews, and process those applications. And as of last week, we had 815 eligibility specialists onboard in our agency in the SNAP program. Hiring has been a tremendous help in addressing our processing delays.
Did something change? Was there any change in salary or? Why are people applying now that weren't applying six months ago?
The lift, OMB's lifting of the two-for-one rule was definitely a help, and the partnerships with DCAS over recruitment, going to more job fairs, weekly, all of that has been a tremendous help in our recruitment efforts.
And we've partnered in some of those, or, you know.
And anybody else who wants to partner with us, we're happy, happy to come out to recruit.
Please, colleagues, whoever can take them up, please do. Because this is something that's beneficial to all of us. So I'll ask a couple of other procedural questions, and then I want to, I want to, you know, allow the other chairs to ask questions because we do have a hearing here at 1:00 for finance. So I'm sure that at some point, they will come and try to kick us out. Regarding the state COVID benefits, those were, I guess, I think, they ended in February, March?
The end of February was the end of the.
The end of February, yeah. So we, you know, I did personally, through the General Welfare Committee, put in a request to the governor to consider adopting a similar policy to that of Governor Murphy's in New Jersey for the state to pick up an additional $93 a month benefit for food stamp recipients. Has HRA had conversations with the state about, you know, doing something similar?
We've been, we're, we've been relying a lot on our great congressional delegation in Washington to make sure that they are advocating to maintain or even increase our benefits. We're working with city partners to advocate to maintain or even increase benefits, and we are happy for all the advocacy at both the federal and the state level to make sure that we both maintain the current level of benefits for SNAP recipients and increase if at all possible.
Do SNAP recipients receive cost-of-living adjustments?
I'm sorry?
Do SNAP recipients?
Yes, every fall, there is a Thrifty Food Plan adjustment to the SNAP benefits.
Every fall?
Every fall.
Okay.
The federal government.
What is the percentage of that increase?
It's Thrifty Food Plan based on costs of groceries and things like that.
Well, hopefully, they're calculating the cost of eggs.
There was a pretty large increase last fall. It was the first time we saw such a large increase.
No, the inflation rates are astronomical in our communities. So during, I know that, and I'm not even going to ask the question as it was written because I know that MyCity platform has been launched. Could you kind of walk us through what the status of the initiative is and what has the first phase of the launch entailed? And what will the second phase entail?
So those questions are really better presented to OTI, who's taking the lead on this. We did partner closely with them for the childcare application that went live recently on MyCity, and we look forward to continuing to partner with OTI as they add more items to their platform.
Will HRA programs be included? Do you know?
Really, it's a question for OTI. We stand ready to partner with them, and we had a great partnership with them on the childcare application that launched.
But they have not reached out to ask HRA to participate as of yet? To include HRA programs into that database?
We were very focused on the childcare application. I'm not sure what their next steps are at this time.
Okay. And can you tell us what the current case ratio for SNAP is?
I'm sorry?
The current case ratio.
Oh, so the SNAP program is not a caseload-based program. It's activity-based, so as applications come in, as recertifications come in, case changes come in, the next available staff member processes each one.
HRA's longstanding food assistance program, formerly known as EFAP, was revamped and expanded as of September 2022 and renamed the Community Food Connection Program, or CFC. We would like to learn more about how this new version of the program has been going and who is the new vendor for this program? And do they use subcontractors as well?
The program is going well. We meet regularly with some of the emergency food providers, a lot of the larger ones, and we've recently started introducing a few smaller ones as well. I participated in that meeting myself to get feedback on the new provider and the program and make sure that we're adjusting as necessary. Feedback has been really positive so far. We've made small tweaks where needed, but generally, the providers are happy with the new provider. H Schreier is the name of the vendor. And they've been very responsive to any issues that have arisen as we rolled out the new program.
Okay. Can you tell us about, a little bit about the diversity of the food offered under the CFC? You know, are kosher, halal, culturally relevant, and healthy options included?
Yep, so with this new program, it's very different than the prior EFAP program. We have fresh produce, we have dairy, shelf-stable foods, frozen foods, culturally appropriate foods, including but not limited to kosher and halal items. As I mentioned in my testimony, we have halal proteins for the first time ever, and just a lot more flexibility when ordering and scheduling deliveries. Under the old program, we would order the food from DCAS and have it delivered to the food bank's warehouse, and then the emergency food providers had a choice of what we chose to have delivered to the warehouse. The way this works now is H Schreier has a huge catalog of food available that's constantly changing and updating, produce especially as the seasons change, meat products, and can be much more responsive to seasonality, to prices, et cetera, giving all of our emergency food providers a whole lot more choice than they had under the prior program.
So do the providers decide what type of products they want?
Yep, we give them a line of credit, and they go onto the online website that Schreier has, and they pick the items that they want. They can, they can have different items every month. They can make changes if their population is changing or the needs of their community are changing.
That's wonderful. Can you tell us what the percentage of food distributed are fresh items, such as fruits, vegetables, and proteins versus shelf-stable items?
I have that here. So right now, we are not separating out the produce. We'll make sure that we do that for federal fiscal year 2024. So the, in the numbers, I'm going to give you the produce is included in our refrigerated item count. But for, and this is percentages based on pounds of food. So far, what has been ordered is 63% dry food, 13% frozen food, and 24% refrigerated food, which again includes fresh produce.
I have a pantry around the corner from my apartment, and I, I'll tell you that I'm very impressed with the quality of the food options. And I am seeing, you know, at least in my experience, I'm seeing a lot more like bananas and a lot of fruit and vegetables, really fresh, really, you know, really nice. They look like they're really good quality. And the lines have grown. I mean, obviously, word gets around, right? Everybody's like really excited about it. When my mom was alive, I couldn't get her off the line. I'm like, "Mom, you don't need to be on the line." And she's like, "They give really good stuff. This one has, this one has hot dogs, and the other one has..."
It's a social event, too, and I'm glad to hear the food quality is good.
Yeah, yeah. Hot dogs. They were giving hot dogs. At one point, they were giving milk, and that was a, that was a huge, you know, thing for her. And I think that comes right from having been food insecure your entire life, is, you know. She had a huge appreciation for that. And I'll ask one final question because I know that we have a lot to get to. In the fiscal year 2023 adopted plan, 14 million in city funding was added to HRA's budget in just fiscal year 2023 for Benefit Access Pilot Program. In the preliminary plan, 4.9 was rolled from fiscal year 2023 to 2024. Can you detail what the Benefit Access Pilot Program? Can you detail what the Benefit Access Pilot Program is? And does it just relate to SNAP or other benefit programs included?
So New York City Benefits Program is being managed out of City Hall through us. And it's gonna focus not just on SNAP benefits or D S S benefits, but it will focus on all benefits that are available in New York City, including things like SCRA, D R E and other programs. They are working with the C B Os who were selected for the program to get them set set and up and running. And we are working in close partnership with them, but City Hall really is is driving that.
City Hall is is?
The Betsy McLean's Office, P E U, the just looking at benefits overall for the city. I think it's great that they're taking a leadership role there so that it will be a one-stop shop for all New York City benefits and not just D S S benefits.
Can you tell us why was a portion of the funding rolled into the preliminary plan?
I think it was probably a delay in the program, but they they would have to better answer those questions.
And how many C B Os will H R A contract with for this program?
I think I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. It's it's, I wanna say like thirty, thirty-ish.
Thirty-ish, okay. Do we know how many years the C B O contract is for?
I don't have that with me, no.
Okay. Okay, I will pass it over to Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask about the Elderly Simplified Application Project, or E S A P, for SNAP. For a few years now, New York State has been participating in the E S A P program, which makes the SNAP application and renewal process easier for qualifying households with elderly or disabled individuals. How many E S A P applications and renewals did H R A process in fiscal year twenty twenty-two? And and fiscal year twenty twenty-three, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Both fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so we're not tracking by the type of application that is submitted for E S A P. We do make the application available on our website. You can get it through Info Line. But we're not tracking the the type of application when we're processing the SNAP.
Okay, noted, thank you. Is E S A P available through Access H R A?
You can download and print the E S A P application through Access H R A, yes.
And has H R A coordinated in any way with N Y C Aging to increase awareness of E S A P? Perhaps at older adult centers or through New York or through N Y C Aging's case management?
Yeah, our outreach teams work closely with our partners at the Department for the Aging on all benefits access, including for SNAP, including E S A P applications, absolutely.
Great.
It's part of our standard outreach package.
Part of your what?
Standard outreach packaging.
Okay, thank you. And what percentage of qualifying elderly or disabled individuals are currently using the E S A P application?
We're not tracking by the type of application that we receive.
So by the type or even, okay. Does H R A automatically make qualifying SNAP applicants and enrollees aware of E S A P?
No.
So once, once you're receiving SNAP benefits and you reach a particular age, you're not necessarily made aware of E S A P?
No, not necessarily. We do make people aware if they are eligible for our I V R recertification process, which is a phone-based process. It's even easier than than the E S A P application. You don't need to submit any paperwork. When you, we'll notify you if you are eligible. You can, you call the the twenty-four-hour automated phone line for I V R that allows you to certify that, yes, I I don't have any earned income. My unearned income remains the same. I haven't moved. All the members of my household are the same. You just say yes to those prompts and then your application, your benefits are recertified without any need to even submit an application.
Okay, thank you. And then in your testimony, you mentioned prioritizing frontline staff hiring. Do you know what the current vacancy rate for those positions is?
No, I don't know what the current vacancy rate is. What we have been doing is filling positions and hiring up. And we will continue to work closely with O M B to make sure that we have enough staff to process all of the applications that are coming in and and do and complete all of our work.
So is it fair to say that you currently don't have enough staff then to complete the work?
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have been working so hard to fill to fill positions, working with D C A S, working with O M B on hiring. It's been an absolute high priority for our agency to fill our frontline vacancies.
Okay, maybe you can follow up with the the specific number of vacancies for those frontline staff?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna move on to N Y C Aging. Please provide an update on the number of older adults visiting O A Cs for congregate meals? And has this number increased since December of twenty twenty-two?
Hi, good morning. So I can get back to you with an exact number, but we're are we're seeing about eighty, eighty-two percent, I believe, participation in our programs. We have seen a steady increase, so we're still not at full participation, but we are seeing the numbers go up, so we're very proud of that.
Do you have attendance numbers by month that you can share?
Yes, I don't have them with me, but we can circle back with you on that, yes.
Thank you. How many O A Cs continue to provide a grab-and-go meal option?
I don't have that exact number, but it's about one-third, I believe, of our programs that that R F P to do a grab-and-go option.
And do you know how often and for which meal? So like how many days a week and if it's for breakfast or?
So it's it's typically one meal a day that they can do. I I can say generally, it's it's probably lunch, sometimes dinner. But I don't, again, I don't have that in front of me, but um but we can circle back if you did want that information specifically. But it's one meal for five days a week.
One meal for five days a week?
Yes.
Great. And what about the utilization rates of the program?
Of of participants? Of participants, just at centers?
A third of O A Cs have the program, but then how many older adults are utilizing?
Are utilizing the grab-and-go?
Yeah.
That's something we have to circle back with you on.
Okay. How have O A C utilization rates impacted the allocation of funding to O A Cs in the F Y twenty-four budget? So has there been a direct correlation between increased or sustained utilization and increased funding or sustained funding?
For fiscal year twenty-four?
Correct.
So we're still negotiating with O M B on the the budget, so we can, we hope to have more information on that at the executive budget hearing in May.
Okay, I look forward to that. Do you have data that you can share that demonstrates the impact of the Join Us campaign?
It's too soon for us to have exact data, but we did see an uptick in interest. So we don't know specifically numbers on how many more people participated, but we did see a lot of more people visiting our website, calling Aging Connect, so.
Do you know, when you say how many more, do you know approximately what that increase may have looked like? So not necessarily a total number, but like five percent more than before or ten percent more calls?
Sorry, can't read. It's, I think it's, we, I don't have that with us about the the specifics about how much more interest, but I think that's something we could circle back on. As far as the attendance, though, we do hope to have that information in the future.
Okay.
Oh, and I just wanna add, sorry, it's hard to correlate exactly because there's so many different, there's different outreach going on besides the Join Us. So it's hard to say specifically that the Join Us campaign, you know, when we see an increase in attendance.
Has had the direct.
Yeah, exactly.
But but overall, you're saying you've seen more phone calls, more website visits?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah. When we, the campaign launched, we did see an increase in interest.
Okay. What can the the city council do to help N Y C Aging increase older adult awareness of O A Cs and the resources they offer, including nutritious meals?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. I think, you know, just keeping, getting the word out there and helping to dispel the myths of aging. You know, that I think there's a lot of stigma still around ageism and and people thinking that it's not, you know, it's a place where people are just playing bingo or, you know, it's not really lively and and that's really not what our centers are. So I think just continuing to spread the word of our programs that we have so many resources there and services and and getting people even just to check it out, I think once they see it, they are usually very interested in coming back.
Okay. I've visited, I have visited so far many older adult clubs and I usually bring my colleagues for, you know, whose district I'm in. So at least, you know, we're, more people are definitely visiting and aware, I think. And bingo is very lively and active.
It's just, it's not all we do.
Yes, sure, there's a very robust programming. Is there currently a waitlist for home-delivered meals?
So that's a great question. The the waitlist varies day by day. And that it's so currently, I think the last number we saw this week was two people, but it's really not indicative of a bigger chronic issue with the program. It's it's more about just like timely, you know, I guess from the day somebody requests a meal to when they receive it. But again, it varies day by day and it's very, very minimal compared to how many older adults are receiving meals, so we're very proud of that.
So sorry, can you just run run through that again? You're saying that there's a a gap between when people request and then when they?
Not a gap, it's more, it just, it's, if, I guess, depending on what day you, you know, if it's a Friday that you are, you call and receive, meet a meal, we, if, depending on what day the delivery is, it might be Monday. That's one example of why there could be a waitlist, but really, it's it's changes day by day. So we're, and it's it's very minimal.
Okay, do you have like maybe an average of the daily, the the number of people per day that might be waiting? Like, is it five or is it a hundred?
I don't have that specifically with me, but I would say it's closer to five than, it's definitely, it's very minimal. Our programs have been doing a great job of ensuring that everybody who needs a meal gets a meal.
Okay. Have home-delivered meal utilization rates increased since December of twenty twenty-two?
As you know? Yes, we have, our December twenty twenty, I'm not sure of that specific date. We have seen some increase in in utilization of H D M, but I don't have the exact. We can circle back with you on the exact numbers of what the increase is.
Okay, so you'll follow up with that? Okay.
Yes.
I would be curious to know if they've increased, if so, by how much that increase has been? And then what you attribute the increase to? What does N Y C Aging attribute the increase to?
Sure, I mean, our, since we've changed, since the last R F P, the programs have changed a little bit. We have more flexibility in types of meals clients can receive. So I think that's that's one of the reasons we believe that there's an increased desire for H D M meals. And they're, you know, more culturally sensitive, and so that's something we continue to work on as well.
Okay. In F Y twenty-three, the council appropriated three million dollars for new home-delivered meal vans. Can you please provide an update of the number of new H D M vans that have been operationalized and what steps still need to be taken in this process?
Yes, I have that. So I wanna give you the exact number. Sorry, one second. Sorry. I cannot find here, but I believe it's fourteen have been delivered already. But they are all, we are working with all of our providers to to ensure that they receive their 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 vehicles before the deadline of June thirtieth.
Okay, so that's fourteen out of forty-four total?
Yes.
So thirty, thirty-one percent about?
Yeah, so that's what's been delivered. The other ones have been, we're working with them and the vendors, but there was a shortage in.
Okay, we've, hold on. Okay, we're requesting in our budget response to add five million more dollars for vans in in N Y C Aging's capital budget. So hopefully, we can get those vans out to the providers that really need them. During the pandemic, we heard about issues of food waste where older adults did not necessarily receive home-delivered meals that met their dietary, cultural or religious needs. How does N Y C Aging work with H D M providers to ensure that older adults are receiving food they can or want to eat so that as little as food as possible is wasted?
So as I mentioned, our H D M providers are required to provide culturally appropriate meals. And through our case management programs, the they work with the clients to ensure that they know what type of meal they're requesting, that they receive one that they can use, and also that they get the amount that they need so that there's little to no waste.
So can you describe the nutritional and dietary standards established for home-delivered meals and congregate meals? Who sets those standards? On what research or evidence are these standards based? If you could just talk a little bit about that and then I can ask any follow-up questions.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna give you the exact. Yes, so we follow, we follow federal guidelines, state and city. So the federal guidelines that New York City Aging follows are the dietary guidelines for Americans, and that's released every five years, which are put out by the U S Department of Health and Human Services and the U S Department of Agriculture. The state guidelines are determined by the New York State Office for the Aging. And their nutrition program standards are mandate that meals follow the dietary guidelines and outline procedures for service providers, including when to take food temperatures, ensuring appropriate documentation and promote nutrition education and counseling. And then finally, the city guidelines follow Article eighty-one of the New York City Health Code, which all food service establishments must follow, and the New York City Food Standards, which set requirements for any government facility where food is served, including agency contractors. These standards are typically stricter than dietary guidelines. It includes specific requirements for food items such as canned and frozen vegetables to have less than two hundred twenty milligrams of sodium.
Okay, great. That covered many of my questions, but not, but not all. So who determines what, whether food is culturally appropriate or culturally relevant?
That is a very good question. So we work with our providers. Our nutrition team works with the providers to ensure that their menus, while as they develop the menus, are culturally appropriate. We also survey clients. That's one of the requirements our providers do. And our case management staff also, or not our staff, but the providers, they serve clients who receive H D M meals also to ensure that they are satisfied with their meals. So through feedback and our work together, we we help create the menus for the programs.
Okay. Bear with me as I just check these off real quick. Do you know if the nutritional standards are being met across the board by providers? Or is N Y C Aging aware of providers that are not meeting these standards?
So because we work with the the providers to create the menus, to ensure that the standards are met, they they, in theory, are all meeting them. If they're not for any reason, that that would be something we would find during assessment and we would just work with the program to help them, to figure out what what the issues are and and figure out a way to meet those standards.
Okay. What does the process look like during an assessment for determining if somebody is out of compliance and how do you bring them into compliance?
So we have a tool that all of our nutrition consultants use when they they go out to the field. And so they have questions on there whether they're following the menu. And so that's something that we can, if they're not, if, as long as they follow the menu, then they would be in compliance because the menus are created in partnership with the programs to ensure that it is meeting the standards.
Okay. I know you may not be able to address or answer all of these questions, but I did want to just address the Medicaid enrollment issue, if I may. N Y C Aging sent a notice to providers on March thirtieth that said they must stop enrolling new clients in case management and by extension, home-delivered meals if they're already enrolled in Medicaid, reportedly due to a state comptroller's audit about mixing or double-dipping with federal funding sources. This has led to extensive confusion and deep concern about the ability of older adults to receive community-based services, including food. When and why did N Y C Aging start accepting Medicaid-enrolled individuals into their services?
So I'd first like to acknowledge that there has been no official report from the state comptroller, which has implicated New York City Aging as incorrectly incorrectly servicing clients who qualify for the H D M program. We were simply alerted to the preliminary audit, which then compelled the New York State Office for the Aging to inform us that clients are not eligible to receive New York City Aging-funded home-delivered meals if they're currently receiving Medicaid. N Y S O F A provides state oversight to our agency, which governs and funds the H D M program. And we were responding to that directive based on that preliminary audit. Our practice was to secure services for all clients found to be food insecure during the initial intake and assessment process. This is an ongoing issue that we have now been alerted to and we're working to address.
So are you advocating on behalf of the folks who are Medicaid recipients and also H D M recipients who would presumably no longer be able to receive home-delivered meals?
Yes, we're working with the State Office for the Aging to to figure out what the nuances are and how to best move forward.
Figure out what the?
If there are nuances, so that there's. If there are nuances, so that there's no, yes, to ensure that we're in compliance, but also meeting the needs of our clients.
But I guess my question is, not so much ensuring that you are in compliance, but getting people the food that they've already been receiving and still need, need to receive.
Right, so at this, at the moment, we are working with our case management programs to redirect clients who, if they need meals, to ensure that they're getting them somewhere else, either through an OAC or other program through Medicaid.
Okay. We understand existing clients will be grandfathered in. Do you know how many people this might include? And if they're going to be grandfathered in permanently or just on a temporary basis?
We're still working out the details and it's too soon for us to have any kind of data like that. This just went into effect a few days ago.
Okay, we've heard from advocates that it could be close to 8,000 people, which is obviously very concerning. So, you know, we'll be following closely. And, okay, hold on one second. All right, that's the end of my questions for now. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it over to Chair Mealy, thank you.
Well, thank you, thanks for being here. That was very alarming, I gotta keep up with that, 8,000, that's bad. I have a few questions, I'm not going to be redundant. In the fiscal 2023 adoption plan, 14 million in the city funding was added to HRA's budget in just fiscal 2023 for a benefit access pilot program. In the preliminary plan, 4.9 million was rolled from fiscal 2023 to 2024. Can you please detail what the benefits access pilot program is? And does it just relate to SNAP? Or are other benefit programs included?
Thank you. So the New York City Benefits Program is being managed out of City Hall to coordinate all New York City benefits as part of this program, not just DSS benefits. It is, in our budget, we are a strong partner with City Hall on benefits access. But we're not the manager of this program and it will absolutely include all benefits, not just ours.
You know what CBOs are included in it? To implement this program?
We'll have to get back to you on that. I think that there's about 30 CBOs that were selected to participate. We'll have to get back to you on the details.
Okay, then. Early on in the pandemic, HRA began redeploying staff from other areas to assist with processing administration of SNAP and other benefit programs. Is the agency still redeploying staff for this?
We are still redeploying staff to do this work, to process benefits. It's not as many as during the pandemic. As, as the city has opened back up and programs have restarted, we have had to send staff back to their program areas. Most recently, with the Medicaid unwinding and the requirement to start processing Medicaid applications and Medicaid recertifications. Those Medicaid staff that had been redeployed to help out have to go back to process the Medicaid recertifications, just for example. But we still have staff that are redeployed.
Do you know how many for SNAP specifically?
I'll have to get back to you on the exact numbers of staff.
From which other areas at HRA are they being deployed to? From which other departments?
So, and again, I'll have to get back to you on the specifics, but a couple of the primary areas that they are being redeployed from are the program integrity area. These are staff that are responsible for ensuring that those who are receiving benefits are eligible for benefits. We are relying instead on a lot of data matches to do that work rather than the individual staff investigations. Just as a priority right now, it's more important to get people on benefits and then we can send those staff back to do their regular work once we get caught up.
Okay, I read your testimony. We prioritize frontline staff hiring. We sought and obtained waivers from the state and federal partners and other teams connected more New Yorkers to benefits than any recent pre-pandemic year with 1.7 million that received. What waiver was given?
So we've had a number of waivers throughout the pandemic. Some of the ones that we are continuing to work with our state and federal partners on are the waivers to allow us to extend SNAP recertifications. So we are, we have been getting waivers and we continue to make use of that to extend recertifications an additional four to six months. That frees up our staff to, instead of working on those SNAP recertifications, those households can continue to get their benefits and we can focus our efforts on the new applications that are coming in. That has been a tremendous help, that waiver in particular.
Okay, so it has helped?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay. I've got two more questions. Knowing the needs tied to food for asylum seekers, what additional steps are being taken to address these needs? Is HRA looking to see if, what other benefits these families are eligible for? And how are their needs being met?
So asylum seekers that are in the DHS emergency hotels and in the HRCs receive three meals a day at those locations.
Are they eligible for any other programs you're letting them know about?
They are absolutely welcome to and are applying for benefits. Some of them are eligible for safety net assistance based on their status and documentation, but not all.
Okay, my last question. Pre-pandemic, well pandemic EBT. We know pre-EBT applications are submitted by the state. In this case, OTDA and not, and not New York City. Yet, we know now how important these benefits are to families struggling with hunger. New York State has not yet submitted a plan to USDA for the PEBT for the summer of 2023. What conversations are being had with OTDA to ensure that families will have access to the federal dollars for food?
So the PEBT benefits are administered directly by the state OTDA. They do not flow through our agency. We'll have to get back to you on what their plans are.
Are you in conversations or anything?
It's not a benefit that flows through our agencies. It is, it is a state benefit program.
Okay, then, thank you, chairs.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that we've also been joined by Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Dinowitz. We will now hear from Councilmember Schuman.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much, Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair of General Welfare, and Crystal Hudson, Chair of Aging, and Darlene Mealy, Chair of the Subcommittee on Food Insecurity for this important hearing. So I have a couple of questions. One is, how many older adults are on SNAP?
I believe I provided that in my testimony. 360,000 New Yorkers are, receive SNAP and are age 65 or older in FY22. It's the average monthly number of SNAP recipients.
Of the, of the entire population that gets SNAP, what percentage would you say that is?
360,000 divided by 1.7 million.
I'm terrible at math, so don't ask me to do it.
I want to say it's like 15%ish, it sounds, seems.
They're a lot, I mean, I have, I don't have a quote-unquote high-needs district, but I do have individuals with high needs. And I also have, I represent District 29 in Queens, which has one of the highest number of older adults, many of whom are food insecure. So that's an important issue for me. Have all of the former recovery meals clients been screened for home-delivered meals in SNAP? And if so, what are the percentages of clients that are eligible for these services?
So all of the recovery meals clients have been followed up with and were screened for whatever their needs are. There was many different needs, so some clients maybe didn't qualify or were able to go to an OAC or other program. For those who did qualify, they were screened. And if they, depending on the assessment, they would receive HDM programs. But everybody was notified at the end of the recovery meals and was appropriately sent to, you know, referred to a program that worked for them.
For older adults, how do you educate folks on being able to apply for SNAP if they need it?
Sure, so at our centers, they, we have, there's programming that can be around SNAP. Also, our case, the caseworkers in the OACs or in our NORCs or case management programs also work with older adults to assess their needs and if necessary, of course, help them apply for SNAP.
And I'm also going to ask, I do this at a lot of hearings of the agencies that you work with, the city council members, to promote that for their constituents as well, so that we can make sure that people are able to access the services that they need. Now I have Commissioner.
I'd like to just add that the, that our outreach teams at DSS, we also go out to the older adult centers to help with SNAP enrollment.
Thank you, Commissioner. So my question, actually Commissioner Barry to you, is so you said 49.9% right now of the SNAP applications you're able to do on time, correct?
Correct.
What does on time mean?
On time means within 30 days, so all the others are more than 30 days.
Do you have a percentage of what's, what's the, what's the largest outlier of the 30, outside of the 30 days?
We're really focused on anything that is past the 30 days.
Okay. And you said that you're, actually in your testimony, you said that you have, you're working on streamlining the process. What does that exactly mean?
So, looking to make things easier, for example, just this week, for the, those who are applying for cash assistance and SNAP benefits jointly, we launched a Cash Assistance On-Demand Telephone Interview System, which is the same thing we have on the SNAP side. We now have it on the Cash Assistance side. So instead of us making a phone call out to an applicant to conduct the interview, that maybe we connect with the person, maybe we don't, maybe we have to have a few calls back and forth, very inefficient, takes up a lot of time, our staff time and the client's time. As of this week, we launched On-Demand for Cash Assistance. So applicants for Cash Assistance, again, and that's the Cash Assistance and SNAP applications, they can call us at their convenience, Monday through Friday, nine to five, to have their interview conducted.
Okay, and that, do you have anything else in addition to that? Or that's pretty much what you're working on? Are there other processes that you're trying to streamline or that's?
No, we've, we've done a lot of other things in-house to make sure that we are, that we've done things like, instead of staff processing applications and recertifications that are relevant to the specific center that they're working on, we have made it so that staff can process any application that comes in citywide so you don't end up with really long processing times at one center that may be lower-staffed and shorter at another center that has more, more staff availability. So we've made changes like that just in processing to make it more efficient and across the board.
Chair, can I ask one more question? Is that okay? Thank you. So you, you also said in your testimony that you endeavored to support a range of nutritious food options, that kind of thing. So as Chair of the Health Committee, I just passed a citywide diabetes reduction plan. So how does the nutrition fit in with trying to make folks healthier?
So certainly, as we are making food available to, through the Community Food Connections Program, where we work closely with the Mayor's Office of Food Policy to make sure that the foods that are available are both, are culturally diverse, are religiously diverse. We're also making sure that they meet our nutrition standards. So each food item has to meet the city's nutrition standards.
Would you be willing to work with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene as we develop this program to reduce diabetes in terms of those?
Absolutely, we work very closely with them as well, absolutely.
I appreciate that very much because it's so important. The life, the lifespan of an average New Yorker has gone down drastically, according to the New York City Department of Health. So we want to do everything we can and have all the agencies work together to make sure that all New Yorkers are healthier and I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lee?
Hi, good morning, everyone. And thank you so much, Chairs, for this hearing. As someone who ran senior centers before, it's definitely very near and dear to me in social services as well. And thank you because we actually had DSS at the senior center at the nonprofit I previously ran and it was extremely helpful having that right there at the center. So, quick question, because as we all know, the mayor recently announced another round of 4% pegs across the board in terms of cuts. And so just wanted to get a sense from you all. And I guess this is more geared towards DIFTA. How, how will the peg impact when it comes to meal services contracted through NYC, you know, Aging? And also, what other impacts will the cuts have for DIFTA and contracted providers?
Sure. Oh, sorry. The mayor only recently announced this peg and we're still in the process of working with OMB to determine how this will be realized at New York City Aging. As discussions continue regarding the fiscal year '24 budget, we look forward to meeting with council next month following the release of the executive budget, which should provide clarity to this issue. As always, we're open to discussing budgetary concerns with council and intend to have a fruitful discussion as part of the upcoming executive budget hearing.
Okay. And how is it that you all are assessing the inflation cost impacts for raw food, gas, other materials at the older adult centers and home-delivered meals programs? And if so, what is the plan to address the budget needs? Because also, sometimes the regulation changes, if there's cost increases, you know, just how, what the plans are to address that.
Sure, so, so HDM providers have experienced increases in fuel, food, and transportation costs due to inflation, which has affected their operations. However, due to the reimbursement rate increase, some of those increased inflationary costs have been covered or more easily weathered. We always work closely with our providers to address issues and respond to concerns, especially where food programs are concerned. As OACs are continuing to come back to pre-pandemic levels, they have been able to have more flexibility with regards to congregate meal funding while serving a smaller population than prior to March 2020. This has allowed them to adjust more easily to the impact of inflation.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, I don't know if this has changed internally at DIFTA, but for the 10% indirect rates that are allowed in terms of flexibility with the contracts, is that something that can be applied towards some of those costs? And is it something, is it, is it a discussion where you and the providers are able to negotiate that based on each contract or how does that?
I think that would be a better question for, for our fiscal team. I'm not.
And is there a possibility of a mid-year increase for FY23 at this point to address the needs? And if not, I mean, you sort of answered this, but if not, how does DIFTA anticipate providing, anticipate providers financially sustaining their meal programs?
So I, because we're still working with OMB, I think we can have more clarity on that at the next, the budget hearing.
Okay.
But we are, you know, we're, we're working with them closely to ensure that nobody goes without a meal.
Okay. Does New York City, does DIFTA have an estimate of how many people who were previously receiving congregate meals before the pandemic transitioned to home-delivered meals due to mobility or cognitive challenges or other personal issues? Is that tracked?
Sorry. Yes, sorry, can you, can you repeat the question? Is this about tracking the former recovery meal clients?
Yes, so do you have an estimate or sense of how many older adults moved from the normal congregate meals
Oh, yes.
over to, you know, the home-delivered meal program, maybe due to the pandemic or during that time?
Yes, I do have that, I want to give you the right number. Yes, so as of February 2023, there are 2,714 active HDM clients who, prior to the pandemic, were congregate meal clients at an OAC and have now transitioned to home-delivered meals because of mobility issues. So this represents 13.2% of the number of currently active HDM clients.
Okay, and then also, for the grab-and-gos, because this is something we hear all the time, because the grab-and-go meals during the pandemic actually proved to be very successful and a lot of seniors are still asking if they can have those grab-and-go meals. And so is it an option for groups if they prefer it? And if, even if they didn't include it as one of their planned activities in the last RFP, is it an option that you'll allow them to still provide those grab-and-gos?
So although, older adult centers are required by the Older Americans Act to provide congregate meals, however, to accommodate the food needs of older adults during the pandemic, we did, grab-and-go options were allowed. At present, the grab-and-go meal service has officially ended. However, some, the OACs who did wisely make the grab-and-go as a permanent fix. However, some, the OACs who did wisely make the grab-and-go as a permanent fixture of their, of their food delivery programs, they are able to meet a wider range of food needs for older New Yorkers. We do recognize the importance of congregate meals and how they combat issues like social isolation. However, we're also committed to alleviating food insecurity among older adults whenever possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. We've also been joined by Councilmember Stevens, and I have a couple of more questions. On average, can you tell us what the dollar amount of monthly benefits lost from the city SNAP, for city SNAP recipients after the ending of the federal SNAP increase program?
On average, a household size of one lost about a hundred dollars and a household size of four lost about two hundred, two hundred dollars.
Two hundred? Okay. Have all SNAP recipients in the city seen their benefits decrease since the change became effective?
Yes. Every SNAP recipient was receiving an emergency allotment and every SNAP recipient has lost that emergency allotment.
Was there any, any information to, was there any attempt to communicate that to recipients? I, I asked because just yesterday I was doing constituent services, which I love. It's my, my, my first passion. I love doing constituent services. But a senior citizen came in and she was freaking out. And she's like, Diana, they decreased my food stamps. I don't know what's going on. And so I had to sit there and explain to her why this had occurred and what we were doing to try to, you know, rectify this and, you know, she should pray. And, you know, hopefully we would get a response from the state or the federal government and it's, you know, sometime soon. But, you know, I, I wonder if that was a fluke or, you know, what's, what level of communication does HRA have with its clients to inform them that these changes are happening? Because that's a pretty big, I mean, especially if you have a bigger family, that's a, that's a big, you know, dip and, and the amount of funds that are coming in for food. So people should plan accordingly.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the state sent letters to all the recipients. We advertised it through our CBOs. We put it on our hold message for Info Line. So we did try to reach people as many ways as possible through, through mailed notices, through CBO partners making communications and hold messages on Info Line.
Do you happen to have a flyer or something that you're posting that we can maybe, that you may be able to share?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I think it would be helpful. And lastly, what is, what is the, what is HRA proactively doing to bridge this gap for New Yorkers who are now receiving decreased allotments? What outreach is HRA doing for people to have their applications reviewed in case that they are eligible for an increased benefit?
Obviously, we are, we are reviewing every application and recertification as they come in. Clients have the opportunities to submit changes to their case at any time. And we have a six-month mailer, again, is an opportunity to submit any changes you have so we can reevaluate your eligibility for SNAP benefits. The other thing we're doing is we, it's really too soon at this point because the benefits just ended at the end of February. But we're monitoring our, our pantries very carefully that receive the CFC funding to see if they are experiencing any uptake. We haven't seen that yet, but it is something that we are watching carefully.
I'm sorry if I missed this and it was asked before, but regarding the, so I know that when the, the pandemic EBT program ended, there was some, some, some communication about there being a summer program, right? For school-aged children. So will families see an increase throughout the summer? And what, what is HRA, because I, I, if I read the question correctly, and again, I'm sorry if it was read before, I didn't catch it. It says, you know, we know the importance of these benefits, how important these, these benefits are to families struggling with hunger. And New York State has not yet submitted a plan to the USDA for PEBT for the summer of twenty-twenty-three. What conversations are you having with OTDA to ensure that families will have access to these federal dollars?
I, I know that the PEBT program is very popular. I believe provides benefits to families with, with kids in school. It is a state OTDA program that is administered directly by the state and does not flow through our agency.
But are you, I, I mean, are you having conversations with them, seeing as how this will impact New Yorkers receiving benefits?
We, we can follow up and have a, and, and find out.
Okay. Now, just out of curiosity, because I know that we have this, this whole workforce shortage and, and it dawned on me that HRA has a workforce development kind of arm. It's not a, it's not a huge arm, but there's an arm there, right? Is there, has there been any opportunity presented to existing clients to participate in any of the workforce? Bless you. What is going on in this room? Everybody's sleeping? Have they been invited to, to participate in conversations, to apply for these positions, these available positions?
Yes, absolutely. In addition to the job fairs that we're doing with city council members, with DCAS, we are also doing job fairs for these positions through our Business Link arm. That is the arm that, that does the, the job, job-seeking for our clients. We have another Business Link Fair, Job Fair specifically for our open frontline positions next week. And we're doing them at least monthly. It's, it's really important. It's important. There's a population that wants jobs, that needs jobs. These are our clients. And they have, and they have lived experience. Who better to deliver our services than those clients? Absolutely.
They understand the application process better than anybody and the nuances to it. Is there any coordination with HRA and DOHMH regarding the, the groceries-to-go program?
We are aware of the program, absolutely.
But there's no coordination in terms of, I mean, I'm not as well-versed on that program, but my understanding is that, you know, if New Yorkers that are lower income would qualify for certain credits that they could use for purchasing food, for paying, for delivery. And that seems like maybe something that would benefit SNAP recipients. Is there any, any intention of ensuring that you're communicating that to SNAP recipients so that they're aware that this program exists? I, I just, I'm always curious about the, you know, the way that, that, that the different agencies worked, you know, collaboratively, so that we're integrating, you know, each program and into the, one program into the other seamlessly. And that doesn't always happen that way. So just curious.
Yeah. So absolutely, we're collaborating, we're talking. DOHMH is going to have to talk more about how they are implementing that particular program. But we absolutely participated in conversations early on about SNAP recipients, what level of benefits they get currently. We also talked a lot about who's not eligible for SNAP benefits and asked that they also consider that population as a potential recipient for, for this program or any program that they're running. But you would have to ask them how they ended up operationalizing. We also assisted with submitting a waiver request for the program so that SNAP recipients who are participating in the program don't have, see a reduction in their SNAP benefits.
Awesome. Okay. That's good. That's good information. I had another question. Okay. Does HRA track where the bulk of applications are coming from, by borough, by district?
We can absolutely break down applications by borough and district. I don't have that with me, but we do have that information.
No, I'm, I'm curious, because when we started to receive calls, my office started to, to receive calls from several of my colleagues regarding the, the slowdown in, in the processing of applications, a lot of those calls were coming from the Bronx. And I thought it was kind of weird that they were all coming from the Bronx. And then, and then it dawned on me, well, no, it shouldn't feel weird, right? Because as a representative that has, you know, I represent two boroughs. And even though there's severe poverty in both, and I did see longer, long lines in East Harlem as well, it was nothing compared to what I was seeing in the Bronx part of my district. And so that, that really worries me. Because I, you know, I, I'm thinking, ten years from now, like, what did we do today that, you know, ensured that the next pandemic didn't, you know, completely obliterate that community? That we left them better off. And, you know, I just, I, I wonder if there's, again, in coordinating services with other city agencies and when we're making decisions in terms of how we're funding food pantries that are now maybe, you know, maximizing, you know, their resources because the, the need is higher, the demand is higher, right, than the, than the resources that they have? Like, does that level of coordination, to your knowledge, happen?
I'm sure that we could do better on some of that coordination. But one of, one of the process improvements that we made that I mentioned earlier, did try to get at that, at least within our own program, of making sure that staff could process applications from any borough, from any district, so that everybody is helping everybody out and no one borough or district is, is suffering with a longer wait time than any other.
Well, I mean, if there's someone here from the administration, I would like to put in a plug that, you know, I, I, I don't, I, you know, I, I agree that we need to get rid of rats, but I, I wouldn't, I don't think it's a bad idea to have a food czar that's making these connections. Somebody that's whose job it is, right, to make sure that there's interconnectivity between the programs and services that we're providing so that there are no gaps in service. And with that, unless anyone has any, any other questions? Any colleagues? Okay. Well, thank you so much for being here today. And we'll continue to have these conversations, I'm sure. It was really nice hearing from the administration today and look forward to more dialogue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Everyone, my name is Amita Kilowan, and I am going to be calling on panels today from members of the public. Our first panel, which is going to be an in-person panel, will be comprised of MJ Okma, Digram Jabejyan, Camilla Gomez, and Rachel Sabella. And I want to remind everyone that all public testimony will be limited to two minutes. And for those that are going to be- For those that are going to be joining us on Zoom, I want to remind folks on Zoom that there will be a few seconds of a delay before you are unmuted by a member of our staff, before we can hear you. Our next panel is going to be a virtual panel. And I'm going to call up that panel, just so you all are aware, so you can be prepared for the next panel as well. So this current panel is going to be comprised of MJ Okma, Digram, Digram Jabejyan, Camilla Sofia Gomez, and Rachel Sabella. And also Sharon Asherbin, if Sharon is here. This first panel will also be, you will also be on that panel. And then the virtual panel that will follow this panel will be comprised of Emilio Tavares, Jane Zhang, Leah Eden, and Debbie Priya Chaturji. All right, you, you may begin in whichever order you decide.
Good morning, Chairs. My name is MJ Okma with Sage. We run a network of LGBTQ+ older adult centers throughout New York City. A recent report from the Williams Institute found that LGBTQ+ elders are sixty percent more likely to be experiencing food insecurity than their non-LGBTQ+ peers. This is due to a lifetime of compounding discrimination combined with barriers to addressing nutrition services, including lack of family support, shame in seeking assistance, and rejection in field of judgment from service providers. While there's no comprehensive data specifically to New York City, Sage has witnessed high rates of food insecurity among our participants, disproportionately among elders of color and transgender elders. To work to address this crisis, Sage has partnered with Love Win's Food Pantry to operate an LGBTQ+ affirming pop-up food pantry out of our older adult centers in Midtown Manhattan, Harlem, the Bronx, and Brooklyn. This pilot program has already fed over four hundred households. Food insecurity also affects close to half of people living with HIV in the United States. And the number of New Yorkers aging with HIV is rapidly growing due to advances in medicine and overall shifting of age demographics. It is estimated by 2030, seventy-two percent of New Yorkers living with HIV will be over the age of fifty. Numerous studies have directly linked food insecurity with, among people living with HIV to suboptimal treatment adherence and increased transmission risk. In fact, food insecurity among older adults with HIV makes them twenty-nine percent less likely to achieve viral suppression needed to be undetectable and untransmittable. Steps can be taken to address this crisis, including collecting and publishing data on food insecurity rates among LGBTQ+ older adults in New York City. This can be done in part by requesting and analyzing sexual orientation and gender identity data collected by the New York State Government through the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance System. We also recommend investing in LGBTQ+ affirming food pantry programs, such as our partners at Love Win's Food Pantry, and prioritizing HIV interventions that incorporate targeted food assistance strategies for older people living with HIV. Thank you, Chairs, for your leadership. Sage really values our partnership with the city council and looks forward with working on you on these issues.
You can jump right in, whoever wants to go next. All right. Hi, folks. Thank you, Chair Ayala, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, and every member of the Committee on General Welfare, the Committee on Aging, and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity for your time and consideration. My name is Camilla Gomez, and I am here on behalf of God's Love We Deliver, New York City's leading provider of medically tailored, home-delivered meals and nutritional counseling for people living with severe or chronic illnesses. Made with zero starters, fillers, or preservatives, our meals are prepared in our kitchen and delivered directly to clients' homes. The medically tailored meal model is an intervention designed to support people living with severe and chronic illnesses. Meal plans are tailored to the medical and dietary needs of the client by registered dietitian nutritionists, MTMs, as we like to call them, improve health outcomes, lower cost of care, and increase patient satisfaction. Medically tailored meals can make all the difference for those who we call the sickest of the sick or the five percent of patients who are creating fifty percent of healthcare costs. As part of the MTM intervention, along with the provision of medically tailored meals, our clients receive unlimited nutritional counseling sessions from our team of RDNs in an effort to provide ongoing support to clients. We believe that being sick and hungry is a crisis that demands an urgent response from, for New Yorkers living with complex illnesses. God's Love is the only service that stands between them and hunger. Each year, God's Love continues to grow and meet the demand. Last year alone, we delivered over three point two million meals to over ten thousand five hundred New Yorkers living with severe illnesses, along with their dependents and caregivers. This year, we are on track to deliver three point six million meals and have seen a thirty-three percent growth in meal deliveries in the first half of FY twenty-three. Now, in our thirty-eighth year of service, we have been a longstanding lifesaving resource for New Yorkers who are living with serious illnesses and facing hunger. Food insecurity impacts an individual's ability to follow medication plans, control chronic conditions, and receive timely medical care. Furthermore, malnourishment increases a person's likelihood to be readmitted to the hospital after first hospitalization by fifty percent. We also saw a widespread increase in food insecurity during the coronavirus pandemic and its impact on our community's health. Every year, we see an increase in demand for our services across the five boroughs. We target outreach to the most underserved communities with greater health disparities to remove barriers to equity and health and well-being. As our lifesaving services improve the health outcomes of the increasing number of New Yorkers who need our services, we kindly ask the committee to support our FY twenty-four speakers' request for two hundred and fifty thousand in discretionary funding to support the increased provision of medically tailored, home-delivered meals. And for those of you who have joined us at God's Love in the past, we thank you, like Chair Hudson. It was wonderful to have you. And for those of you who haven't had the chance to join us, we hope you will soon. Thank you.
I'm just going to keep it going. Good morning. My name is Rachel Sabella. I'm the Director of No Kid Hungry New York with Share Our Strength. We're a national organization working to end childhood hunger. And especially, I am focused on the one-in-four children in New York City that currently face hunger. I want to first say thank you to the Chairs, thank you to the members for being here today. It was really striking, the accountability that you were putting on the administration and doing the follow-up questions, asking them, making sure they are showing what is really happening. We are in a hunger crisis. We have been in one for a long time. While we may not see the lines as much in the media, you all know what's out there. We see it each and every day. So I want to thank you for having this robust hearing, especially want to thank the staff for all the work that they put into this. I have a long-written testimony. I've also been tweeting up a storm. You'll see yourselves tagged in there about this. But I want to cover a few things that may not have come up yet today and also clarify something that you pushed on and they didn't give you a real answer on. So number one, I do want to focus on the one-in-four children in New York City that could face hunger. As hearings continue, as budgets and conversations continue, we urge you to keep the Department of Education accountable. It's because of this council that there is a breakfast after the bell program that is supposed to be in every New York City public school. We want to make sure they are pushing that even more, making it easier for children to access those no-cost meals. We were thrilled, as an anti-hunger community, to see- We were thrilled, as an anti-hunger community, to see the Speaker's state of the city that highlighted the importance of the summer meals program and the work that the council is going to do to ensure that these programs are in every corner of your district. You know the parks where children hang out. You know those neighborhoods, and continuing to work with them during the summer, which we call the hungriest time of year, is going to be critical in this. So I thank you for that, and I look forward to working with you. I want to highlight the question on pandemic EBT. I'm pretty sure all of your offices have gotten a lot of calls over the time, and I'm going to be quick, I just want to give clarity on this, about those benefits and about that awareness. Right now, New York State has not yet submitted their plan, and yes, the administration was correct that it has to come from OTDA, but what we need is accountability. We want to make sure that the Mayor's Office, HRA, and the council is making sure that the most robust plan that will give eligible families extra benefits this summer, when we know their SNAP benefits have been reduced, happen. So while we know HRA does not administer that program, they have a voice and can be advocates in this, and we really thank you for pushing it and the work you can do. My last word I will say here, and I thank you for this, is the accountability. We need the council's voice. With SNAP under attack at the federal level, with them looking at increased work requirements, we heard remarks Monday morning in New York City that would have a devastating impact on New Yorkers facing hunger. We want to work with you, continue to work with the administration, and ensure we are helping those New Yorkers struggling. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairs, and fellow committee and Subcommittee members. Thank you for taking the time to hold this hearing. My name is Dikram Jabejian, and I am the Food Policy Manager for the Metropolitan Council on Jewish Poverty. Met Council is one of America's largest Jewish charities, and we operate the country's largest kosher emergency food network. In total, our 10 programs support over 320,000 New Yorkers a year. As COVID-19 emergency declarations vanish, SNAP emergency allotments end for 1.7 million New Yorkers, and donations dissipate, we want to thank this council and the members present today for their support of emergency food programs. By calling for $60 million of baseline funding for Community Food Connections, this council has shown its dedication to our work in the communities we feed. At Met Council, we play a unique role in New York's emergency food space. We offer exclusively kosher and halal emergency food. While we serve anyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, or religion, we also ensure communities with specific cultural needs have the food resources they deserve. CFC provides some of the most flexible and comprehensive funding we can access. It offers a robust product list that includes over 70 kosher-certified products. This is significantly more than what is available from USDA TFAP. And though we have immense gratitude for CFC, we also must note a few flaws. As of this morning, the CFC vendor website still does not offer any certified halal protein. Halal certifications are essential, and this lack of certified products means that providers serving Muslim communities must spend private dollars purchasing products routinely available to most CFC pantries. Another issue with CFC has been the pricing of fresh products. While we are grateful for the incorporation of more fresh produce and protein into CFC, the prices of these products are often much higher than they are on the open market. This pricing causes emergency food programs to prioritize shelf-stable products rather than the fresh food New Yorkers want. It also causes an over-reliance on private funding because CFC pricing simply does not add up. Met Council and our partners and colleagues continue to serve more New Yorkers now than at any point in the history of our organizations. While the pandemic may be over for many, the lasting economic effects and persistent inflation brought on by COVID-19 remain part of the daily lives of our community members. We fully support the council's request of $60 million for CFC, and we hope to see continued support for emergency food programs going forward. Thank you for holding this hearing today.
Good morning. Good morning, or should I say good afternoon. Thank you, Council Chair, and council members, and the representatives. What, I'm the Director of the Older Adult Center in the Riverdale Y, so, and representing the Am Park NORC and the Riverdale Y's New Beginning Older Adult Center. And I kind of want to bring you a view from the boots on the ground, since I know that you know the statistics and have the, that you know the statistics and that you also know the finances and the data. It's been very clear to me that, that everybody's very informed and knew what questions to ask of NYC Aging and the Department of Social Services. Currently, the Riverdale Y's older adult services serve Riverdale, Spud and Dybel, Kingsbridge, and Van Cortlandt Village. At the height of the pandemic, we were delivering 230 meals to vulnerable elderly. Currently, we serve 80 meals a day at our older adult service center and deliver another 40 Meals on Heels, which was in addition to add and grow and add on to our contract. We deliver these meals daily to residents of the communities who are unable to attend the center. We also host a food pantry where we distribute self-stable kosher pantry bags from Met Council to 130 older adults each month. Okay, I know that you're aware of how food prices and food insecurity is increasing as prices rise and benefits are curtailed. I've worked in this field for 20 years and have observed firsthand changes in our communities because of the high cost of food. I also believe that I have a unique perspective as a witness to a changing demographic in a neighborhood which is not often thought of as needy. When I started working in Riverdale 11 years ago, I knew there were poor, struggling older adults in our neighborhood. I believe they were the last tenant in a rent-stabilized apartment or people who had overspent their means. I guessed that that was, that maybe 5% were SNAP-eligible. Little did I know, I was extremely wrong. I was shocked to find out that nearly 25% of our older adult center members were SNAP-eligible, and that few had applied for, or were even aware that they were eligible for benefits. This is before the pandemic. In North Riverdale, there are several lower-income developments and many people living for 50 years in the same rent-controlled apartment. I found the statistics particularly alarming because, unlike residents in targeted neighborhoods, our low-income older adult residents were clearly not receiving the benefits they were entitled to. There's a stigma to being poor and food insecure, and it turns out, the stigma is even greater in a neighborhood where people assume that you have money. Neighborhoods like Fieldston, a Bronx enclave for the rich, are just a few blocks away from Kingsbridge, and income, therefore, income is not discussed among our populations. Members do not want to be seen talking to a social worker or asking for financial help. Lunch at an older adult center evens the playing field for these members, allowing all to eat regardless of income and establishing a safety net where hot daily meals and monthly pantry package is available without stigma to older adults. Our Meals on Heels program, which was, is unique, run by volunteers and stemmed from our pandemic food delivery programs, reaches the socially isolated, financially needy adults.
Can you, yeah, I'm sorry, we were going to need you to wrap. We can, you can submit the entire testimony.
Thank you very much again for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to limit our questions, not because we're being rude or insensitive. I want to thank you for, first and foremost, not only for being here, but for all of the work. I know that, you know, in my district, I wouldn't have, I would never survive without, you know, the support of, of all of the programs here today. But we have 27, well, we have seven other panels, and we have under an hour to get them through, so thank you so much.
Thank you to this panel, and just to reiterate, for members of the public
We've also been joined by Councilmember Russell.
And just to reiterate, members of the public will be limited to two minutes. However, if you do have written testimony that you'd like to submit, it will be reviewed in full by committee staff, and that can be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing testimony@council@nyc.gov. So I'm now going to call on our next panel. Our next panel will be a virtual panel comprised of Emilio Tavares, Jane Zhang, Lea Eden, and Debbie Priya Chaturji. And so we will begin now with Emilio Tavares.
Yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Emilio Tavares, and I'm the Policy and Research Director for Hunger Free America. We are a nonprofit organization based in New York City, and we focus on providing SNAP and WIC pre-screening and enrollment assistance citywide. So we help older adults, families, and individuals access lifesaving nutrition assistance that allow them to put food on the table and also improve their nutrition. So I'm honored to testify today on behalf of the approximately 1.3 million New Yorkers that are 65 and over specifically, and really talking about the needs of their community to better access these programs. My background is in social work, so I have direct experience helping a lot of different households apply for a variety of benefits, not just SNAP and WIC, but workforce assistance, housing assistance, I think, HEEP, DRE, SCREE, all of those programs, I have direct experience with, and I can tell you what the frustration is with a lot of people in how complicated it is, having to go in person to multiple different offices, basically fill out the same work, and sort of follow that, you know, that wait time, that phone call. It's very time-consuming and also emotionally taxing for people to have to tell their story over and over again. And so I just, in the context of this hearing, I think it's important to increase the amount of data sharing that is done between city agencies. So we highlighted how the MyCity portal has been launched, but it only includes childcare programs. And so we would really love to see that expanded to include all of the programs in DSS as well as DIFTA. I think home-delivered meals, shopping online, using SNAP online, being able to apply online. People will always need in-person services, but I just think it would help greatly people to be able to apply one time to all the things that they're eligible for and avoid all of the repetitive, you know, waiting in different government agencies. So thank you for this opportunity and hope to continue the conversation.
Thank you so much, Emilio, for your testimony. And now we'll call on Jane Zhang. Over now to Jane.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to testify today. My name is Jane Zhang. I'm a grants and advocacy coordinator from the Korean Community Services of Metropolitan New York. Founded in 1973, KCS is the oldest and largest Korean nonprofit organization assisting underserved communities across the New York City area. AAPIs demonstrate the highest poverty rate of all ethnic groups in New York City, with 1 in 5 of them living in poverty. Low-income levels lead to a decline in individuals' ability to acquire food. Accordingly, a 2022 report by NYU Center for the Study of Asian American Health found that access to food was Asian Americans' top concern over the pandemic years. To help maintain the health and well-being of underserved communities coping with food insecurity, KCS Flushing Older Adult Center provided 64,803 meals to Flushing-based older adults. Our Corona Older Adult Center provided 20,907 meals to Corona-based older adults. Our Home Delivered Meal Program has delivered 73,077 meals as of February 2023. It is on pace to deliver 109,616 meals by the end of FY23. In addition to providing affordable and nutritious meals, KCS Older Adult Center's nutrition program has been holistically fulfilling meal service needs unique to AAPI older adults such as ethnic food, language access, and accommodations for disabilities. Naturally, demand for our meal services across AAPI communities has only increased in the past few years. We have been meeting this increased demand with support from dedicated staff and partner organizations. However, we have also been experiencing deficits. For each meal we provide due to limited funding that reduces our capacity to pay for elevated raw food costs, hire and retain bilingual and culturally competent staff, prepare meals, and distribute them across the city. Although we want to reach many more people who need our services, we are struggling to sustain our program. Therefore, KCS asks that an equitable share of city funding be allocated towards our nutrition program. Please consider our requests such that every AAPI New Yorker will be able to lead nutritionally balanced lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, for your testimony. Now call on Lea Eden for testimony. Over now to Lea.
Hi, thank you so much to the Chairs and to the members for holding today's hearing. My name is Lea Eden. I'm the Executive Director of Equity Advocates. We fight the root causes of food insecurity through policy and systems change, and since the early days of the COVID-19 pandemic, we've convened the New York City Food Policy Alliance, a multi-sector group of 75 food system stakeholders from across the city, including frontline CBOs working to address food insecurity and strengthen the food system. So I'm here to thank the council for its support in making investments in the emergency food system and ensuring timely access to critical benefits like SNAP, as many today have spoken about. But I'm also here to really urge the council to intentionally invest in community-driven long-term solutions to food insecurity that also work towards creating ownership models and wealth creation for historically marginalized communities across the entire food system. So when thinking about how to sustainably address food insecurity, the city should be partnering with and supporting community food hub models like University City and Corbin Health Food Project, community-owned food retail such as the Central Brooklyn Food Co-op, as ways to leverage existing and growing community-owned food, health, farming, and retail infrastructures. The council can also increase funding for worker cooperative business development and community land trust initiatives as ways to support worker cooperatives in the food space and critically needed access to land for farming and gardening. Another way to invest in community-driven solutions to food insecurity is through strengthening our city's urban agriculture sector, and specifically investing in funding to train this next generation of successful farmers. We can do that by expanding the DOE's Agriculture, Food, and Natural Resources CTE programs and investing in local training programs like Farm School New York City. Thank you. We'll submit additional written testimony with more detail, but really appreciate the opportunity to share today.
Thank you, Lea. Thank you for your testimony. I'll now turn it over to Debbie Priya Chaturji. Over now to Debbie Priya.
Thank you, Chairperson Ayala, Hudson, Mealy, and to the members of the General Welfare Committee for this opportunity to testify. My name is Debbie Priya Chaturji, and I'm a senior economist with the Community Service Society of New York. It's a longtime nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting economic opportunity for low and moderate income New Yorkers. We use research, advocacy, and direct services to champion a more equitable city and state. Today, my testimony is going to focus on the state of food insecurity in New York City. For 20 years and continuing, CSS has been conducting a unique survey of opinions and hardships facing low-income New Yorkers in its unheard-third survey. So every survey, we ask people the following questions: Did you receive free food or meals from food pantry, soup kitchen, meal program, friend, family, relative because you didn't have enough to eat? Or did you often skip meals and go hungry because there wasn't enough to buy food? Based on their yes or no responses, we gauge the extent of food hardship. In 2022, 30% of all respondents said they experienced food hardship. Over half of low-income New Yorkers endured food hardship in 2022. So among those making less than 200% of the poverty level, over half of them endured some sort of food insecurity. Around 20% of these households endured severe food hardship, meaning they either sought out free food or they went to bed hungry. Food insecurity is at a crisis level for cities Hispanic and Latinx residents. 60% of low-income Hispanic/Latinx New Yorkers reported experiencing food hardship. 26% reported experiencing severe food hardship, and almost 48% of women reported experiencing severe food hardship. We know that the greatest casualty of food insecurity are the children, whose physical, mental, and cognitive development can be imperiled by lack of adequate nutrition, and yet, 61% of low-income households with children reported food hardship. We include these, all of these statistics in a fuller report that you can read up on our website. It is embargoed until next week, but happy to share with members of the, we're members of the committee here. A lot has been made about the termination of the emergency allotments and SNAP, so I'm not going to go into it.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Just want to finish by saying that the City Council should pressureize the state, yet since the budget is still in the making, to expand the Empire State Childcare Credit and increase the minimum wage. These have been proven to really dramatically reduce food insecurity on a long-term basis. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie Priya, and thanks to this entire panel for your testimony. I'm now going to call the next two panels. The next panel is going to be an in-person panel comprised of Maria Ojeda, Stacy McCray, Brianna Payden-Williams, and Vic Benson. And this panel will be followed by a virtual panel comprised of Helen An, Mary Archana Fernandez, Jeremy Kaplan, Matthew Cosbyok, and Davinder Singh. You may begin when ready. You may begin when ready.
My name is Maria Ojeda. Yes, good morning. My name is Maria Ojeda. I'm in the Kitchen AID of Center on the Square Older Adult Center at Greenwich House. Thank you to the chairs and fellow city council members for this opportunity to testify today. Greenwich House has been around for 120 years. We provide services that support people in New York City of all ages. We do this providing programs for arts and education, health services, and services for older adults. Greenwich House has five centers in Manhattan for older adults. We help members with social activities, learning, and staying healthy. I have worked as a Kitchen AID for six years. I hear from people every day who are having a really hard time and do not have enough food to eat. Just last week, a woman asked me if I had any leftovers because she didn't have enough food for dinner. It was heartbreaking. I gave her rice and vegetables, which is all I had. If we had more funding per meal, our seniors would have more to eat during lunch, which is the only meal some have all day. If we had more funding for meals, seniors would have more to eat during lunch. Across our Older Adult Center, we serve about 250 meals a day, five days a week. Many of our members arrive in the morning and stay all day until we close because they crave community and social connections. On Fridays, we used to provide frozen meals so that seniors have food to eat over the weekend when our centers are closed. However, we no longer have funding for this. So many seniors are serving portions of the week of the weekly lunch to eat over the weekends. The city should consider increasing the funding per meal to ensure we can provide seniors with more quality nutritious food. We are only currently funded to serve lunch, but we know if we could serve breakfast, snack, and even dinner, there would be no shortage of demand. Overall, no more funding per meal for meal, the opportunity to serve breakfast and snack and frozen to-go meals for the weekend would make a big difference in the life of our members who are experiencing food insecurity. Greenwich House appreciates the New York City Council for working to address food insecurity for all the community members. I thank the committees for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Stacey G. McCray, and I'm a Kitchen Aid at Greenwich House, Our Lady of Pompeii Older Adult Center. Thank you to the chairs and fellow city council members for this opportunity to testify today. Greenwich House provides older adult services, arts, and education programs, and health services for over 20,000 New Yorkers annually. Our Our Lady of Pompeii is one of five older adult centers in Manhattan, offering our members vital social, educational, physical, and cultural resources. As a Kitchen Aid, I work with many older adults who rely on our lunch service as their only meal for the day. Data shows that poverty rates increased for older adults in 2021, while the cost of living continues to rise. So many people tell us they can't afford groceries and that their SNAP benefits don't go as far as they used to. Unfortunately, I have seen how changes in these programs can have a devastating impact on their ability to access the food they need to stay healthy, nourished, and age with dignity. One of the most critical issues that I have witnessed are only funded to serve lunch. This vulnerable service is a lifeline for our seniors, and one meal a day is not enough to sustain them all day. This can have a profound effect, impact on their overall health and well-being. I serve lunch to our members every day, and I get to know them. They're like family. When we are closed over the weekends, a lot of our members tell me they don't have access to much food until we open again. For example, last week I was sitting at the front desk with a member when a member arrived, early for lunch to ask if there would be any extra food available. I told him I wasn't sure, but that he could stand in line after the meal service ends. He joined a long line of others in need of more food. Luckily, that day, we had more rice available to offer, but that was just not the case every day. On days, there are, some days, there are no extras. I witnessed members eating only half of their lunch meal and saving the rest for dinner. If I had more funding per meal, if we had more funding per meal, we could offer each member more food to help sustain them through the day. If we had funding for a proper breakfast and snacks, that would help us better meet the needs of our community. It concerns me greatly to think of what our members would do as summer approaches and the temperature rise, making it more difficult for them to commute to our center for lunch or grocery stores. If we had funding to provide frozen frozen meals for weekends, it would help them a great deal. Overall, more funding per meal, the opportunity to serve breakfast and snacks, and the ability to provide more frozen meals for weekends would really help our community. Thank you to the New York City Council for working to address food insecurity for our older community members. And thank you to the committees for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, my uncle worked at the at that church for many, many years, so you just remind me. I'm like, Lady of Pompeii.
Wonderful.
Hi, I'm Brianna Payden-Williams. I'm the Communications and Policy Associate at LiveOn New York. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. LiveOn New York's members represent more than 110 community-based nonprofits, many of which are here today, including Greenwich House, KCS, Riverdale Y, as well as Sage and others, that provide critical services which allow us all to thrive in our community as we age. And for many older New Yorkers, food security remains a harsh reality of daily life, with more than 200,000 older New Yorkers relying on food pantries for much of their nutritional needs. And while food insecurity among older adults has been exacerbated due to the pandemic, coupled with rising costs over the past year, we know that community-based organizations, including older adult centers and home-delivered meal providers, have been essential to ensuring older adults do not go hungry and have food on the table. In addition, we know SNAP benefits have been critical in the fight against food insecurity for in low-income older adults, yet only about half of older adults who qualify for SNAP benefits are currently receiving them. And so to address some of these chronic issues that many have addressed today, we recommend the following. Firstly, recognizing the operation of older adult centers and home-delivered meal programs that have provided nutritional meals for older adults. We know this work wouldn't be possible without the tireless work of human service professionals like the ones up here today. And so we join our partners in calling for the city to just pay all human service workers a livable wage with a 6.5% COLA for all human services contracts. Also, the city must recognize how inflation costs have impacted older adult centers and home-delivered home-delivered meals providers, excuse me, and invest an additional $64.8 million to meet the existing needs of providers. And this includes funding to address the inflation costs for home-delivered meals as well as congregate meals. In addition, we're asking the city to invest $4 million to fully fund holiday and weekend meals that's not currently covered through the city. And lastly, the city should work to expand SNAP benefits for older adults. And we know the underutilization of SNAP benefits is really a major problem among older adults and New Yorkers. With that, I know more information can be found in my written testimony, but thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm Vic Benson, the Policy Analyst at City Meals on Wheels. City Meals works with the network of home-delivered meal providers to fill the gap in the city's HDM program by funding the preparation and delivery of meals on weekends, holidays, and emergencies to homebound older adults alongside additional services. The network of meal providers has seen an increase in need for their services for many years, which was compounded by a pandemic that had an outsized impact on the same population they serve. The nutrition programs serving older adults, including SNAP and HDM, have long been inadequate. National data from 2018 shows that 66% of HDM and 54% of congregate meal recipients reported these meals provide a majority of their daily food. And half of SNAP participants receiving HDM reported they did not always have enough money or benefits to buy the foods they needed. In response to COVID-19, federal relief bills funded expansions that had an impact on food insecurity for older adults through local programs like Get Food and Grab and Go alongside increased SNAP benefits. Now, federal and local temporary emergency programs have ended, returning programs to pre-pandemic operations despite continuing need for investment. High inflation has decreased purchasing power, affecting both food insecure older adults and the providers who serve them. Increased costs are straining meal providers, and without increased funding in the FY24 budget, we could see cuts in these necessary nutrition programs like HDM and congregate meals. The city should permanently expand older adult nutrition programs locally. And to fully fund food, to fully address food insecurity for older adults, the city should make the following investments. We echo the same $64.8 million ask in the FY24 budget to address inflationary costs at HDM and OAC programs and a $4 million ask in the FY24 budget for our City Meals Weekend Meals to fill the gap in the HDM program for weekends and holidays. We also ask for flexibility in OAC contracts to permanently offer Grab and Go meals at older adult centers and to increase HDM funding to include additional meals for clients needing more than one meal a day. And finally, in the absence of continued federal SNAP emergency allotments, the city should continue supplementing SNAP payments to maintain increased purchasing power for SNAP recipients. Thank you.
Thank you to this entire panel for your testimony. Thank you. I'll now call on our next panel. Our next panel is going to be a virtual panel. Again, that panel will be comprised of Helen An, Mary Archana Fernandez, Jeremy Kaplan, Matthew Josbyok, and Davinder Singh. And I will now call on Helen An for testimony. Over now to Helen.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the New York City Council Committee on Aging. My name is Helen An, Senior Director of KCS Older Adult Centers, and I am here today to testify on behalf of Korean Community Services of Metropolitan New York. KCS Older Adult Centers have been providing culturally appropriate meal services and other crucial assistance to older adults since 1986. During fiscal year 2022, we served over 100,000 ethnic Meals on Wheels and over 100,000 in-person and grab-and-go meals. However, the pandemic and the hate crime have exacerbated food insecurity among older adults, especially among homebound older adult immigrants who rely on community resources like ours. As a frontline service provider funded under New York City Aging and City Meals on Wheels, we have been firsthand the severe food insecurity experienced by many older adults in community. We provide not only daily nutritious meals to homebound older adults and congregate meals and grab-and-go options for those who can travel to our centers, but also case management for heavily wait-listed clients, wellness checks, education recreation, and other information referral to reduce social isolation and increase social connection. To continue providing these essential services, we urgently need more funding. Inflation and rising food costs and strict nutrition standards, especially the ethnic raw food ingredients, have made it increasingly difficult to maintain quality programs.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Home-delivered meal services and providers have been directly impacted by rising cost of raw food and transportation, and one of the current weekend meal reimbursement rate of $2.50 and rice per meal is not sufficient. The cost of rice, actually the rice is main source of grain for ethnic food, lots of Asian-like American older adults and family members, has increased over 66% as of today. In addition, we are facing challenges in staff retention and recruitment due to the rising cost of gas, vehicle insurance, repair costs, as well as increasing cost of health insurance premiums. We cannot attract
Thank you. Your time has expired.
good young people.
Thank you, Helen, for your testimony. And again, just as a reminder for folks, you can absolutely send your full-length written testimony to us, and we will review it in its entirety at testimonycouncil.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Just a little bit in a time crunch, just because we have another hearing here at 1 o'clock, and we have so many people that are left to testify. And now I will turn it over to Mary Archana Fernandez for testimony.
Good afternoon, Deputy Speaker Ayala and council members and General Welfare Aging and Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity. My name is Mary Archana Fernandez, and I'm the Director for Family Support Services at SACS, South Asian Council for Social Services. We are a community-based organization located in Flushing, Queens. Our major focus areas are healthcare access and awareness, senior support, and food security. As a multi-service agency that provides a range of services from connection to benefits to food pantry, we are able to see how barriers to accessing benefits impact food insecurity. In 2015, we started the first South Asian food pantry in New York City where South Asian immigrants could get access to food that is culturally relevant to them, such as dal, lentils, atta, whole wheat flour, and basic spices. We started this pantry after one of our senior clients shared with us that she received just $30 in SNAP benefits as her income of $1,400 was considered excess. She shared that she'd visited a few food pantries, but none of them had food that she could eat. SACS is in Flushing, Queens, which is extremely diverse. Over the years, our food pantry has grown to serve other ethnicities. And after talking with our clients, we now try to stock food that is culturally relevant to other communities as well. For instance, we serve flour used to make dumplings for our Chinese clients and rice and a variety of beans to our Hispanic clients. During the pandemic, we began home-delivering groceries to homebound and immune-compromised individuals. Today, we serve over 1,750 households each week through our curbside food pantry and home delivery of groceries. Many of the people that come to our food pantry are immigrants and seniors who do not have access to SNAP benefits and are experiencing tremendous food insecurity. With increasing inflation and the ending of emergency SNAP benefits in this February, we've been hearing from clients that with less SNAP money, they're anxious about where they will get food from. Immigrant seniors do not receive much in SSI benefits due to lack of work history or inability to get all the documentation that is required by HRA and other agencies to complete a benefit application. Clients often share that they must choose between eating a healthy and nutritious meal or paying rent and utilities. Thank you. I will be submitting a written testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mary, for your testimony. I'll now turn it over to Jeremy Kaplan. Over now to Jeremy.
Hi, good morning, chairs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Jeremy Kaplan, Executive Director at Encore Community Services. We provide more than 500,000 meals a year. And when the COVID-19 crisis struck, we proudly facilitated 1.2 million recovery meals in three boroughs. Food insecurity is a very convoluted problem, particularly for New Yorkers. Our common understanding often fails to capture its complexities. New Yorkers face financial constraints, and we all know isolation and loneliness contribute to hunger. Many older adults lack caregivers or a support network to ensure that they receive regular nutritious meals. And we also know that our public assistance programs are labyrinthine and difficult to navigate. It's important for all of us to develop a broader understanding of what food insecurity really is. For example, just the other day, I received a voice message from one of our home-delivered meal clients. The voice message was from an older woman, my guess is in her mid-80s. She went on to compliment the chef for the veggie burger that she received that day, but then she said, and I quote, "I was just assigned a home health aide, thankfully, after having to wait 100 years." And she asked us if we could also deliver the home health aide a meal because her home health aide was hungry. Encore cannot deliver that home health aide a meal, unfortunately, but what we do hope is to receive adequate funding from our city contract to continue to make the delivery for that veggie burger, which supplements, does not supplant other forms of assistance. I urge the council to consider this when negotiating with the administration. A 4% peg to social service agencies is unacceptable. The administration should not balance the city's budget by making sweeping cuts to essential nonprofit organizations, which are the undisputed social safety net for New York City. Instead, we should be increasing funding for the social safety net. Encore Community Services endorses the $64.8 million proposed by LiveOn New York. We cannot afford to do this to our aging population. We cannot afford to do this to our aging population. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I will submit more in my written testimony.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you very much for your testimony. I'll now turn it over to Matthew Josbyak for testimony.
Hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity to submit testimony on Rethink Foods' efforts to combat food insecurity and support frontline community-based organizations and our city's small businesses. My name is Matt Josbyak. I'm the founder and CEO of a New York City-based nonprofit with a mission to create a more sustainable and more equitable food system. Currently, we operate in 32 council districts across all five boroughs and make more than 50,000 meals every single week. As many of the other people here have mentioned, we've seen the drastic cuts affect the people that we serve every single day, and we are looking to the city council to support our work that we have written in our testimony. And in the interest of time, we will just submit the rest through our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you for your testimony. And our final panelists in this panel will be Devinder Singh. Over now to Devinder.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, and all members of the committees for providing us this opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Devinder Paul Singh. I'm here today on behalf of India Home, a nonprofit organization founded by healthcare professionals dedicated to serving South Asian seniors in New York. India Home is the city's largest and most secular older adult center programs aimed at improving the quality of life of immigrant seniors living in Queens and beyond. Since our inception, we have touched the lives of over 5,000-plus older adults through our holistic and cultural competent programs, such as congregate meals, older adult center services, case management, mental health services, advocacy, and educational recreational activities. There are many issues our adults face. Food insecurity in particular is an issue that can have serious physical and emotional consequences. Some of our older adults already have poor health, increased stress and anxiety. For those who experience food insecurity, access to the Food Assistance Program, like Bank School Meal SNAP and others, can be crucial in helping them meet their basic needs. Due to demand for our services, we have expanded to add two more adult, older adult centers, making it a total of six centers that we have. We face difficulties with funding to provide congregate meals across all six centers despite the need. For example, at our center in Jamaica, we serve low-income older adults, and they've allowed our service to have one nutrition meal at least once a day. Another one of our older adults fell and can't cook anymore, so two days a week, their spouse comes to our center depending on our daily meals. After COVID, some older adults would like to eat at home. However, the Department of Aging does not allow grab-and-go meals, which continues to be insensitive to their need. There are many older adults that face similar issues, and resources are limited. Even though resources are running thin, at India Home, we are working extensively to make sure we provide as much as we can for our older adults. Rising food costs make it harder to afford nutritional meals, especially when it comes to culturally competent meals. In addition, there's an undeniable high demand for the services we provide, close to 200% increase since 2019. Due to increase in demand, it is necessary to ask for an increase in funding to expand some of our programs, like case management, so we can get more older adults to apply for SNAP and other benefits.
Thank you, your time has expired.
So there will be more information in the written testimony, which we'll submit. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Devinder, and thank you to this entire panel for your testimony. I'm now going to call on the next two panels. The next panel, which is going to be an in-person panel, will be comprised of Rebecca Valdez, Erin Redden, Judith Seh Khan, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your names, and John Scott. And then the following panel, which will be a virtual panel, will be comprised of Bobby Branigan, Karen Karp, Tanisha Grant, and Megan Eisenberg.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Redden, and I'm a Regional Manager at Emblem Health Neighborhood Care. And we have submitted written testimony for your consideration, which I will provide an overview of today. On behalf of Emblem Health, I would like to thank Chair Hudson, Chair Ayala, and Chair Mealy, and the members of the Committee on Aging, the Committee on General Welfare, and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity for holding this hearing. Emblem Health Neighborhood Care is a nonprofit operating 13 centers, where we provide free, in-person, and virtual support, access to community resources, and health and wellness classes to all community members in English, Spanish, Mandarin, Cantonese, and Haitian Creole. Addressing food insecurity and providing access to healthy food and nutritional guidance are some of our key priorities. We have partnered with other organizations, such as New York Common Pantry, La Juarnada, and the Campaign Against Hunger, to bring food pantry events and farmers' markets to our Chinatown, Crown Heights, East New York, Harlem, and Jackson Heights locations. We provide culturally competent classes, such as Plant-Based Eating 101, and discover a heart-healthy diet, and our care team is trained to assist with accessing SNAP benefits. In addition to our ongoing programming, we also host special resource days, such as our Healthy Eating Habits event being held at our Crown Heights location today, which includes a cooking demonstration, farmer's market, health check-ins, A1C screenings, and blood pressure screenings. In 2022, we served over 61,000 individuals, with nearly 1 in 3 individuals being over the age of 65. This makes us uniquely positioned to help address the challenges that older adults are facing, including issues like food insecurity, loneliness, and social isolation. We also address digital literacy through our free cellphone and tablet literacy classes, and we strongly support the introduction under consideration today. Our impact could be further enhanced through the council's support, and we have submitted requests for your consideration for local and initiative funding focused on access to healthy food and nutritional education, geriatric mental health, and supporting our seniors. Combating food insecurity in New York City requires a coordinated effort to ensure all communities, especially the most vulnerable, have access to fresh food, nutritional guidance, and support. Emblem Health Neighborhood Care hopes to be a constructive partner and resource the city council to accomplish these goals. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. Thank you, chairs and members, for holding today's hearing and the opportunity to submit this testimony. My name is Rebecca Valdez, and I am here on behalf of Corbin Hill Food Project. We're a food justice nonprofit and social enterprise that supplies fresh food to those who need it most. Our programs subsidize the cost and delivery of fresh produce through SNAP, DSNIP, and other grants. Our vision is to build an aligned, equitable, and resilient food system by and for our communities. Our efforts are concentrated in Harlem and the South Bronx, and we're serving 25 to 60 families across each of our 11 sites, weekly or bi-weekly. Along with our partners, which include but are not limited to Fortune Society, Harlem Wellness Center, Philip Randolph Houses, Brotherhood, Sister Soul, Amsterdam Together, Parents Supporting Parents, and Bronx Health Reach, our focus is on the last-mile delivery or moving fresh food directly to meet people where they're at, in safe spaces, a challenging feat in a diverse city that contains so many communities within communities. Many we serve are invisible and historically excluded, whether they are immigrants, elderly, homebound, displaced by gentrification, or formerly justice-involved. Our small organization leverages deep partnerships to pool our collective resources, assets, and relationships to ensure our community is well-fed, healthy, relevant medicinal food in a way that engenders dignity, choice, and joy. We acknowledge the tremendous efforts for food access to address food insecurity and the need to continue funding free food. This larger system, however, measures success simply by volume and poundage of free food that's dropped into communities via flyby, which reinforces dependency on the free food industrial complex without addressing the root causes of food insecurity. We're here to advocate for systems change, specifically beyond the cost of purchasing local food. Investments must also sufficiently cover the logistical challenges and lack of infrastructure, as well as the people that support efforts to move food. We ask the city council for its continued support for community-driven, community-based food systems, including large investments for building capacity and infrastructure, so organizations like ours and our partners can continue our work long-term. For funding that's flexible and can create an alternative system that is self-sustaining, community-controlled, and builds community wealth. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Hi. I'm Judith Seh Khan. I'm the Deputy Executive Director of New York Common Pantry, and I want to thank you all for holding these hearings and for your commitment to those of us who work in the food insecurity field. New York Common Pantry is dedicated to addressing hunger and promoting dignity, health, and self-sufficiency. We operate in over 250 community partner sites throughout the city and offer four interconnected programs. Our Choice Pantry and Mobile Pantry help 365 case management and benefits assessment, our nutrition education, and our senior program known for us as Nourish. In the past year, our programs have provided more than 9 million meals, over 9 million pounds of food, and assisted in accessing over 6 million in benefit dollars, when we've served nearly 600,000 program visitors. We are on track to serve over 10.5 million meals this year and over 650,000 visits. We understand, by being on the ground every day, how devastating food insecurity is to the mental and physical health of those experiencing it, and how much it impacts the quality of life in the communities it impacts. Food insecurity must be properly addressed with ongoing adequate funding and infrastructure support, not just as a response to whatever crisis is happening. The recent crises have left an overwhelming number of families struggling to make ends meet, but even before that, there was an unacceptable number of food insecure people in the city, and those of us addressing the problem have to struggle to get the needed resources. SNAP cuts, the latest crisis, will increase the need at an unprecedented rate over the next year, and it is also unknown what other cuts we may be facing with the new farm bill. During this past March, when SNAP cuts went into effect, we saw a 35% increase in our pantry use versus the previous March. Our Choice Pantry in the Bronx experienced a 44% increase in individuals served. We appeal to you to provide much-needed support. We appreciate your help and your request to increase the amount for the CFC, and we urge the city to also help us with our contracts that will allow for escalation clauses so we can continue to pay our staff appropriately and to meet the needs of those we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith, and thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Just want to make sure John Scott is not here. All right. And thank you to this panel for your testimony. I'll now turn to the next panel, which will be a virtual panel, and will be in the following order: Bobby Branigan, Karen Karp, Tanisha Grant, and Megan Eisenberg. Over now to Bobby Branigan.
Hi. My name is Bobby Branigan. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Mercado. We're proud to be a partner with the city to launch the Groceries to Go program. It's a groundbreaking program that provides low-income New Yorkers with monthly online credit to cover the cost of groceries in their local communities and bring these groceries to their door. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to testify today, and your ongoing leadership in combating food insecurity and diabetes across New York City. Since launching the Groceries to Go program in 2021, we are proud to have built a scalable platform that serves more than 5,000 low-income New Yorkers who are experiencing food insecurity and have hypertension or diabetes. Through our program, more than 350 local grocery stores have gone online, digitized their inventory, creating local jobs, and bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional revenue per store. We believe that the key to healthy eating and food access boils down to choice. Bringing more options to neighbors that lack healthy food access, recognizing New Yorkers' independence and dignity, and empowering New Yorkers to make smart and responsible choices for their families and their health. We are seeing this impact firsthand. We're proud to say that a majority of participants, 62%, are ordering fresh produce through the platform. We are also proud to announce that as of today, the USDA has approved our software application to enable grocery stores to accept SNAP online. We already have one store activated in Pittsburgh, and we'll be launching the service with multiple New York City grocers in the next four to eight weeks. Supporting private-public partnerships is critical to harnessing the talent and resources of the city to advance creative solutions to the most pressing problems facing the city. While our platform addresses an acute social need, we're also providing support and online infrastructure for 350 local stores, which in turn creates local jobs and stimulates local communities, making this program a powerful economic flywheel. Mercado is thrilled to be the city's partner on Groceries to Go, and we look forward to partnering with the New York City Council to help spread the word to the constituents about the resources that help maximize our impact and reach even more New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you for your testimony. I'll now turn it over to Karen Karp. Over now to Karen.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me on this panel. My name is Karen Karp. I'm the President of Karen Karp and Partners. We are a food systems consultancy that I founded here in New York City in 1990. We work across sectors to improve access to healthy food, build local agriculture and food economies, develop sustainable supply chains, and to design educational programming focused on the ag, food, and health jobs of the future. We're proud to count many of the organizations represented here today, as well as the Mayor's Office of Food Policy as our clients. Throughout our history, we have sought to leverage the power of business to catalyze new thinking and approaches to reducing food insecurity. This ranges from supporting a cohort of food pantries to leverage their collective buying power to purchase culturally appropriate food that provides choice and convenience for their clients. And today, I'm working with Mercado to expand the Groceries to Go initiative to a broader audience across New York City. This program is unique and can be thought of as a right-to-food initiative, so very important in these times of economic inequity. This program gives low-income consumers agency to make their own choices, which is an incredibly powerful element to the social and cultural and emotional aspects of reducing food insecurity. Thank you for allowing me to present today.
Thank you, Karen, for your testimony. Over now to Tanisha Grant for testimony.
My name is Tanisha Grant. I am the Executive Director and Founder of Parents Supporting Parents. When we talk about food insecurity, I see a lot of that in Harlem and Washington Heights, where I work, do most of my work. We are a community-based organization, so we are on the ground every day, providing meals, buying meals for people, and partnering with nonprofits like Corbin Hill. I want to say that we need ownership of our food, that, you know, this system that we have of food pantries and of, you know, community-based organizations like Black Voices Matter and Black Riders for Black Lives, giving out food two, three times a week is not sustainable. Our communities want ownership and want to be able to have organic and fresh foods and vegetables, so we ask that the power for food is being given back to the community so that we can continue to partner with organizations like Corbin Hill to make a sustainable line of food for our community so that we no longer have to be food insecure, with our seniors, our families, our parents, our community members are starving for food. I also want to say something quickly about the SNAP. The fact that the SNAP benefits have stopped, the extra SNAP benefit has stopped, has put an enormous amount of pressure on our families to be food secure. We ask that city council push the state and the federal organizations to make sure that those SNAP benefits come back and be permanent. People are desperate for good food. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Tanisha. Over now to Megan Eisenberg. Over now to Megan.
Thank you so much. My name is Megan Eisenberg. I'm the Director of Case Management for Services Now for Adult Persons, Inc., and I will be reading this testimony on behalf of the Chief Executive Officer, Paula Micali. As many of you are aware, SNAP is a multi-service social services agency dedicated to addressing the needs of the ethnically and economically diverse older adult population in Queens County. SNAP covers half of the borough's community districts through many of its programs and works closely with older adults to improve their quality of life. Components of the services provided include hot congregate meals served in both of our older adult centers, health and wellness programs, education and recreation, socialization and case assistance for center members, and seniors from the community at large. Services also include providing home-delivered meals to frail, homebound older adults who are part of our case management program. Recently, many clients are asking us if they can receive more than one meal a day due to the rising cost of food, their inability to keep up with the rising cost of inflation, and their increasing inability to prepare their own meals due to their poor health status. We have found that older adults are finding it much more difficult to manage on their fixed incomes. We started to see a rise in this issue during the COVID pandemic and continue to see this as an increasing challenge. Case workers are finding that more seniors are coming in for financial assistance, looking for solutions to manage from month to month. Inflation is causing them to become overwhelmed and unable to meet expenses, and food stamps has become the number-one entitlement that seniors are applying for when they come in. and their increasing inability to prepare their own meals due to their poor health status. We have found that older adults are finding it much more difficult to manage on their fixed incomes. We started to see a rise in this issue during the COVID pandemic and continue to see this as an increasing challenge. Case workers are finding that more seniors are coming in for financial assistance, looking for solutions to manage from month to month. Inflation is causing them to become overwhelmed and unable to meet expenses, and food stamps has become the number-one entitlement that seniors are applying for when they come in for assistance. Those who are already getting food stamps are finding that it does not stretch enough to keep up with the cost of living. Many seniors with dietary restrictions, such as diabetes or heart disease, need to be more selective with their food choices but are unable to take proper nutritional care of themselves as costs for these food items are prohibitive on their fixed incomes while trying to afford other household expenses. Many of these chronically ill individuals are purchasing less expensive food items, which are often nutritionally unhealthy with added salt, fat, and fillers. Some clients have even resorted to eating fast food daily because it's economical.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. Our written testimony has been submitted. Thank you so much to the council members.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you to this entire panel for your testimony. We're now going to move to an in-person panel. The next panelists will be Keith Carr and Nicole Hunt. Also, if there's anyone else in person who would like to testify, who we do not have a witness slip for, now would be the time to sign up to testify on this panel. You can begin whenever ready. Nicole, I think your mic needs to be turned on.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Nicole Hunt. I'm Associate Director of Public Policy at the Food Bank for New York City. Thank you to the chairs, to the committee members, and committee staff for all the work you do to fight food insecurity and poverty. Due to factors such as record inflation and the loss of pandemic assistance, New Yorkers are cutting back at the grocery store and increasingly turning to food assistance organizations. The number of visits to the Food Assistance Network has increased 80% in the past year, with more than 1.2 million New Yorkers experiencing food insecurity. At the same time, Food Assistance Network is rising to meet the increased need for food and other necessities of the newly arrived immigrants and asylum seekers to our city. As already addressed, in March, nearly 1.7 million New Yorkers who rely on SNAP experienced the loss of a minimum of $95 per month in grocery dollars. Some families lost $260 per month, and most dramatically, some older adults saw their monthly benefit drop to the federal minimum of $23 monthly, or 76 cents per day for food. We know that this is not sufficient. Last year, our Community Kitchen in West Harlem Food Bank provided more than 75,000 prepared meals to older adults in our program and nearly 1.2 million meals to older adults through our food pantry service. More than 18% of New York City's older adult residents live below the federal poverty level. Yet, less than half of eligible older adults participate in SNAP. Outreach and education is needed to ensure access to this critical benefit. When SNAP benefits are insufficient or unavailable, many New Yorkers seek assistance through the Food Assistance Network. Most of our members are not older adult centers. They are food pantries and soup kitchens. But a recent survey revealed that nearly 90% of our network is serving a higher percentage of older adults. What this means is that the services we provide that are specifically for older adults are woefully inadequate. While not an explicit older adult service... Oh, is that it? Oh, that went by much faster than I thought. I have... I'll submit written. Basically, just to fully fund the CBOs at the frontlines that are both providing food and connecting New Yorkers to all the assistance they are eligible for. You'll get lots more in my written.
Testing. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Keith Carr. I'm the Senior Manager of Policy and Government Relations at City Harvest. Thank you for holding this important hearing that not only talks about food insecurity, but more importantly, on the effect that it has on our most vulnerable population, that's our seniors. I won't go into... You can read my written testimony about City Harvest's response to the pandemic, as well as our response to the increased need now with the cuts to the federal emergency SNAP allotments. But I just want to share a few statistics, a snapshot of what we're seeing, particularly from our senior populations at our food pantries and food distributions. The number of seniors served by City Harvest Pantries has increased by over 77% compared to pre-pandemic levels and continues to increase. Seniors 65 years or older are roughly 15% of New York City's population, but more than 24% of City Harvest Mobile Market participants identify as being seniors. Poverty rates are much higher for children than older adults, including seniors. However, poverty rates have increased for seniors, while decreasing for all others between 2010 and 2021. And that's an ACS five-year estimate from 2021. The supplemental poverty measure indicates that millions of children and able-bodied adults without disabilities avoided even greater economic increase due to the child tax credit, earned income tax credits, pandemic unemployment benefits, changes to SNAP, school meals. Millions of seniors on fixed income and income-based housing weren't eligible for any of these programs, so the effect was compounded on them. Seniors participate in SNAP at a lower rate. 70% of eligible seniors participate in SNAP versus 82% of all household. This is particularly due to some seniors on fixed incomes and fixed income-based expenses either being eligible for a smaller SNAP allotment, the process of documenting medical expenses being too tedious, missing recertifications of their benefits, and other barriers. Basically, the process of getting SNAP should not be a barrier to accessing benefits. Not having a smartphone shouldn't be a barrier. Not having access to Wi-Fi or a computer should not be a barrier. So we've highlighted some legislation that we also are in alignment with, with New York City Food Policy Alliance and others that have testified today that speak to all of these, particularly to seniors. And we just asked that the mayor increase the budget. It was heartening to hear what the Commissioner said about increases in the HRA employees, but there's still work to be done because people shouldn't have to wait in line longer than 30 days to find out if you're going to get assistance. And I've submitted my written testimony.
I just have one question, and thank you for sharing that. You listed a couple of factors that might contribute to the under-enrollment of older adults in benefits programs, like lack of access to reliable Wi-Fi or devices. Are those the only reasons you think contribute to this? Or are there other reasons that you might?
Yeah, I'd also say it's just... And I know the Commissioner said that they do a good job of getting the word out. They're not doing a good job of getting the word out. The same way, they didn't do a good job about the SNAP allotments ending. So people were caught off guard. So there just needs to be better communication with communities, working in tandem with community-based organizations. Even the Department of Health is rolling out their new grocery program for people who are experiencing diabetes. But a lot of it is tied to the technology aspect, like you have to have a smartphone or a tablet to participate in the program. So what we've said, part of the New York City Food Policy Coalition, we've said that if you're going to roll this program out, you should offer to either purchase or let people use smart tablets or don't give them a smartphone if you can't, but at least a tablet so they can access the program.
Great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you again for your testimony. We'll now turn to a virtual panel comprised of Imtiaz Hussain, Kevin Jones, and Arif Sunmanu. Over now to Imtiaz.
Good afternoon, Deputy Speaker Ayala Hudson and council members. Thank you for this hearing today. My name is Imtiaz Hussain. I'm the Senior Manager of Advocacy at United Way of New York City. Through provision of food and operational support to hundreds of food organizations across New York City, United Way of New York City serves approximately 1 million New York City men, women, and children struggling to make ends meet and support the human service agencies that serve them. Our mandate is to stem the root causes of poverty and create systems-level change so that everyone leads healthy and financially secure lives. In that spirit, last fall, we launched the Emergency Assistant and Community Needs Fund to assess the most urgent needs of community partners, working with asylum seekers. Today, our fund has awarded approximately $650,000 to 17 different community-based organizations across the city. We want to commend the City Council for its important welcome New York City Initiative launched last month. This important effort leverages philanthropic and public funds to support the needs of New Yorkers in a variety of critical areas, including legal services, workforce development, and food assistance, among others. Over the past year, food providers have expanded their services to meet greater needs. As you all know, pantries tell us they're no longer just a pantry as they strive to meet the needs of new New Yorkers. Pantries are serving in new ways to meet demand, and they're stretching their capacity with very limited resources to serve New Yorkers, including newly arrived migrants. For example, one of our pantries in Betsy has adopted a nearby shelter to better serve asylum seekers and meet their needs. One in the Bronx affiliated with the hospital shared that the typical limit pantry clients to visit only once a month. However, people seeking asylum have needed and been allowed to come in more often because they need additional care and services because their needs, as we all know, are greater than regular clients. We plan to share more information in our written testimony and in more details, and we thank the City Council for uplifting the needs around food insecurity issues in our city so that all New Yorkers can have access to nutritious, timely, and dignified access to food. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Imtiaz, for your testimony. I will now turn to Kevin Jones. Over now to Kevin.
Good afternoon, Chairs Ayala Hudson and Mealy, and members of the City Council Committees on Aging and General Welfare. My name is Kevin Jones, and I'm the Associate State Director for Advocacy at AARP New York, which represents 750,000 members in New York City. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Older adults represent New York's fastest-growing demographic. According to a new report from the Center for Urban Future, sponsored by AARP, New York's 65 and over population grew by 31% over the last decade, or more than 800,000 people, while the under-65 population shrank by nearly half a million. Additionally, the number of New Yorkers living below the poverty line increased by 37.4% over the last decade, and an estimated 21% of older New Yorkers in New York City live in poverty, forcing them to make tough choices such as paying for rent or buying food. And Black, Latino, and Asian-American New Yorkers are even more likely to experience food insecurity and hunger. We need to invest more to support older adults, not less. This is especially true when it comes to food insecurity, particularly because the impacts of inflation, which has rapidly increased food prices, making it even harder to put food on the table. Over 2.2 million New York City residents are food insecure, which is roughly 25% of the overall population. Specifically, AARP is asking the city to increase the investment in home-delivered and congregate meals to meet rising inflation costs and increase demand for services, expand the city's funding allocation for home-delivered meals programs to ensure that more eligible New Yorkers can access two meals per day seven days per week with culturally appropriate food options, increase the per-meal reimbursement rate for meal providers given that the city's current funding does not cover the cost of these meals. Older New Yorkers built the city and made it great. Without real investment, we'll leave our city's older adults behind. The over 1.8 million older adults living in New York City deserve better. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today and for addressing this in your hearing, and I will submit longer testimony in writing.
Thank you, Kevin, for your testimony. I'll now turn to Arif Sunmanu for testimony.
Hi, good afternoon. Just want to say thank you to the council for holding this meeting and allowing us to testify. On March 1st... Sorry. On March 1st of this year, millions of New Yorkers lost emergency... Oh, sorry. My name's Arif Sunmanu, and I'm with Grown NYC. On March 1st of this year, millions of New Yorkers lost emergency SNAP benefits, a safety net crucial to fighting food insecurity. As food prices continue to reach historic highs, Grown NYC stands in solidarity with anti-hunger organizations and calls on our local elected officials to bridge the hunger gap by prioritizing critical food support in your budget and advocating for Congress to increase SNAP support in the upcoming 2023 farm bill. Eighteen years ago, Grown NYC launched a national model for accepting SNAP EBT at farmers' markets, and we continue to support the expansion of SNAP. Last year, 2.4 million in SNAP was redeemed across Grown NYC 60-plus food access sites. Now we have identified an additional pathway to food access. Shortly after emergency SNAP expired in March, Grown NYC's OTC network, which started in 2021, expanded to include both Health First OTC Plus and Humana. Partnering with private insurers helps Grown NYC connect communities coping with food insecurity to fresh, locally grown foods and vegetables. This approach to promoting healthy foods and food choices and improving food access serves as a valuable model for other organizations, communities that want to address food security from their cross-sector collaboration. Farmers Markets' OTC network can make fresh, local food more accessible to New Yorkers. In 2021, 300,000 was redeemed through Grown NYC's OTC program. Equally remarkable are Grown NYC's efforts to support local farmers who grow and deliver high-quality foods to residents of New York City. Both OTC and SNAP benefits at farmers' markets are a win-win solution that can support the health of individuals and the livelihoods of regional farmers. It is a model that can be and should be replicated in other communities across the country. In 2022, 4 million in nutrition benefits have been redeemed at Grown NYC's food access sites, which is a testament to how effectively these programs connect undersourced communities to mutually...
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Okay, I just want to say thank you to the council for your support in the past, especially the speaker, and we look forward to working with your offices hand-in-hand to expand equitable food access.
Thank you, Arif, for your testimony, and thank you to this entire panel for your testimony. At this time, if we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. And if we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I'll call on you in the order of hands raised. Okay, seeing no one else, I'd also like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing testimony@council.nyc.gov. Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair Hudson, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you, Aminta. Thank you to the rest of the staff, and thank you to all of the advocates who came and waited and sat to testify. The information is actually really valuable, and especially during our budget process, where we really rely on your expertise to help us really pinpoint where we need to be redirecting our public dollars, your public dollars, in a way that is truly meaningful to New Yorkers citywide. I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything. But with that, thank you all so much, and have a good rest of your day. This hearing is adjourned.